Good evening, everyone. If I can request that everyone take a seat. We're gonna start in a few minutes. I'm committed to starting on time so we can get out on time. Thank you. You can still talk. I kinda shut the room down, didn't I? Not my intention. Good evening, everyone. I welcome our elected leaders and our staff. Our staff, not, you know, evenings, right? Not your first rodeo. So, we're gonna start off by opening remarks first from our mayor. If my remote will work. Son of a gun. And then after that, our new city manager, Tracy.
So, just for formality, so we... The November 14th, Des Moines City Council's study session is now called to order. Councilmember Nutting will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, let the record show that all council members are present. And to all of the public attending tonight and viewing online, welcome and thank you for thank you for attending. If you are watching online or on Channel 21, please know that we cannot attend to our phones during the meeting. So, if you experience technical problems, please email cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. That's cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. Do we have any correspondence not previously received by council?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. So, tonight, because this is a council retreat, just to organize, to just gain input from the council in regard to the issues that will be presented to us anyway. We're not expecting comments from the public tonight, and it wasn't noticed as there wasn't noticed a comment period available tonight. So, please feel free to bring your comments to the next meeting of the council on November 21st. So, moving on to the introduction, it has been a long time since the council has gathered for a retreat. Five or six years, I think. So, tonight, this process, to me, is just as important as the product. It's important for the public to see that we're gathering together to brainstorm and think and dig deep inside for what our paradigm is about leadership in the city. And also, that's based on the input, though, that we have received from residents as we have been out in the community and read the input and listened to the input over these years. So, we're, the goal is to create, collaborate on a paradigm, but also to create a platform for position statements that will help guide final budget decisions. So, we're nearing the end of our budget process, and I feel like there's gonna be some valuable input into that process. And also spring forward for deeper discussion as we move toward creating a strategic plan. So, looking forward to conversation tonight and being led by Andrew. And I'll pass it over to the city manager if she has any comments.
Nothing, just thank you, council, for your time on this tonight. We've got senior staff here, and we look forward to hearing your input and absolutely using it in final budget decisions. So, thanks so much.
All right. So, I wanna take a moment here to introduce Andrew to you. His background, the, so, we've retained Andrew Ballard of Marketing Solutions, and he opened for us tonight, and he's going to facilitate our retreat and in our discussion of our mission, vision, and values. He's a seasoned and respected growth strategist who specializes in marketing research and strategic planning. He's facilitated over 500 sessions, government and corporate, and has helped hundreds of organizations, public, private, and nonprofit, to develop and execute their plans. So, welcome, Andrew.
Awesome. She read it just the way I wrote it. It was perfect. Thank you, Tracy. I've had the pleasure of working with Tracy on several planning sessions. Our collaboration has been awesome. We've been very successful, especially with the SCA. And I am just, I'm honored to be here, so thank you. So, while I'm gonna facilitate the process, keep us on focused and on track, I wanna be clear that I am in service to all of you. And it's my job to be a good steward of your time and talent. And to that end, while Tracy already did a great job introducing me, so I'm gonna bypass most of my opening comments. But probably the most important thing, and I also taught this at the UW School of Business for many, many years. I wrote a book on it. I mean, I eat, sleep, and breathe this. I really love it. And after doing this for 41 years, I still screw up doing it. I mean, it, you know, it's it's a living thing. But the point of all of this is that if you love what I do, you credit me. If you hate what I do, blame Tracy. No, just kidding, just kidding. But with all of that said, what's really important is to ensure a successful evening. It's gonna really require all of us to actively contribute to the process. And I love the way you put it, to the product. And the product we're producing today, mission, vision, values, is the highest strategic strata. When you get into strategic planning at the mid-level, that's when you're identifying measurable goals. And those goals help council really establish their priorities. And those priorities are what will lead the city manager and staff in terms of the budgets that they bring to you. And once those budgets are approved, it is up to the directors to develop their work plans in support of your goals, right? I mean, as electeds, we don't get into the operational weeds. We have a fantastic staff for that. So, this is really kind of the trailhead, a very important evening. We've got, well, one of my favorite songs was from the 70s. It was Jerry Reed, and the title was "We Have A Long Way To Go In A Short Time To Get There." We've got an aggressive agenda. And if for any reason we're not able to conclude, I will come back or will do Zoom or whatever at no charge to finish it. You know, I want to get this done tonight, but I'm not gonna sacrifice quality for time. But I, you know, I've done this a few times, and usually four hours to get this, these three exercises, 97% of the time, it's enough. So, in terms of the agenda, you have it. I'm not gonna go over it just to save time. I will unpack each of the three exercises as we initiate them. The agenda is on page four of your packet, not, not the PowerPoint slides, but page four of your packet. So, preliminaries, I just wanna share a few things that help level set, you know? Tracy mentioned I've done this a time or two. 200 of those 500 sessions have been for government. I love working with municipalities and counties. That's where most of the work, actually, we have 28 government clients, and so absolutely, oh, 29, the city of Des Moines. So, I'm just gonna jump right into it. Guiding principles, this is just so we all can work productively together. So, participants, my electeds, I'm asking you to agree on the agenda. I know that you've already seen it and approved it, but just my standard slide. Don't feel special, I didn't make this for you. I've used this slide for everything, corporate, government, whatever. But I'm asking everybody, I'm asking my electeds to participate, but no one or few to dominate. You know, we're gonna practice active listening skills, everything that we learned in kindergarten that I forgot in first grade. So, the nuance between disagree, you know, disagreeing or being disagreeable. I actually encourage disagreement. You know, a civil discourse produces a better product. It's being disagreeable in tone that I, I'm sorry, I just don't tolerate it because it's not productive, it doesn't work. I'm really trying to protect all of you. Civil discourse, and you know, again, 97% of the time, it's never an issue, but I'm kinda preparing for those rare instances where it is. So, facilitator, I'm asking you, my seven electeds, to give me the authority, based on the agenda, to keep us focused on our topics and our time. Will you give me that authority to be a good steward of your time and talent in that way? Everybody okay? Awesome, thank you. We're gonna limit sidebar conversations, which is very rare in government. People are, electeds are very focused. And we're gonna keep the conversation at the appropriate strategic level. We're not gonna get into the operational weeds, you know? Mission, vision, values, that's as high up the food chest, 30,000 feet for sure. You know, when we start doing, you know, measurable goals, you know, then we're getting a little bit closer to ground level, 5,000 to 10,000 feet. And parking lot, a tool used by most facilitators. If there are ideas or issues that are not covered on the agenda, I wanna honor your contribution. So, I'll put it on a separate sheet, a parking lot, which I will include in my report that will go to Tracy and Catherine, because I wanna honor that. But then I'm gonna move us right back to our agenda. And again, if we have to, you know, move on in that rare instance, we will, and we'll get it done without it costing the city of any more. So, just a few definitions, again, making sure that we're all singing from the same sheet music. Definition of building consensus. You all know that it's a general agreement. There's no such thing as 100% agreement. Any organization that attempts 100% agreement will never accomplish anything. It's most challenging in the corporate world. But, you know, if most like it or can live with it, we're gonna move forward. And if we do get high-centered, I use the thumbs technique. And I'm gonna ask you, the seven of you, for your thumbs. Thumbs up, I like it. Thumbs sideways, I can live with it. Thumbs down, I don't like it. As long as the up and the sideways beat the downs, we move on, you know, right? Parliamentary procedure. If the downs are close to or equal the aggregate of the side and the up, we continue the conversation. This is not about bowling over or, you know, making a particular timeline. So, I use the nominal group technique. Now, I didn't make this up, but it's a tool I've been using for about 25 of my 41 years. And it's about identifying a problem, generating solutions, but the point is moving from discussion to decision. And that's the whole point. You know, through that thumbs process, and it just keeps things moving. Everyone's opinion among the seven you of you is equal. Nobody is above or below anyone else in the room. It's all equal. Everyone has an opportunity to be heard. Again, we're not, we're not trying to dominate a conversation, but heard. And we vote to prioritize the top solutions, majority rules, real simple, straightforward stuff. You probably could recite that slide in your sleep. So, best practices for a successful retreat. Everybody participates. Do not sit on the sidelines. After agreement, move on. Don't second guess. We don't reverse engineer the process or the product. You know, once there is a majority and, you know, this agreement, we move on. Visioning is the foundation of a strategic plan, I share that. After visioning comes goal setting guided by that mission, vision, values. We use that as a lens to make sure that what we're doing is appropriate. You know, ultimately, your mission, vision, values connects to and prioritizes your service areas. We all want to get everything that's important to us done. We also know there is not the resources to get everything done. That's all we prioritize. There's only three buckets of resource, human, financial, and physical capital. That's it, period. And we can't go beyond what is available, right? And so, that's why your priorities are so important. We can't overwhelm our staff leadership, our city manager and directors. They need your clear direction so they can accomplish your priorities. Again, none of this is new. So, the objective is to establish mission, vision, values, nothing more, and that's where I'm gonna keep us centered. So, definitions, just, you know, not everybody has the same definition of mission, vision, values. I'm gonna give you the working definitions that we'll be using, and, you know, they're they're best practices, they're what is commonly accepted. Mission, a self-imposed purpose or duty, serving as a north star for planning that is used as a lens to focus on appropriate activity. Very, at present day, right? Very different than a vision statement, which is a foresight or mental image of achieving the results of the desired future. It's essentially the legacy that you want to leave, very long-term. Mission, today, typically a vision is one generation or 20 years. That doesn't mean that you can't update it before 20, but we're thinking that far out. Value statement, core and guiding principles really are the code of conduct that drive, you know, how the city's gonna deploy its activity. It's also the code of conduct for everyone associated with the city. But just to distill this thing down to what's really important, you know, it's really, this thing is not behaving. Yeah, it's re, well, okay. I know why. It's, I don't mean to be pointing at this, Jeremy, but the machine is there. Pointing at here is not... It's about a purpose or duty for mission. Vision, desired future. Values, code of conduct. I mean, it doesn't need to get any more complex than that. So, we're gonna start right away. Does anybody have any questions before we jump right into our exercise? We're right on time. Everybody good? Well, if something surfaces for you, bring it up. I'm gonna unpack the mission exercise. So, developing a mission, the qualities of a well-crafted mission statement, I already mentioned the time orientation is present day. It doesn't mean that it sunsets tomorrow, and it's, it's a shelf-stable statement. It defines three things, who we are, what we do, and whom we serve. It's 25 words or less. Nobody's gonna remember a mission dissertation. I remember I did some consulting with Chevron. Chevron Energy, they're at, one of their main headquarters is in the Bay Area. They flew me down, did this whole, I walk in the lobby, and they have this beautifully-framed mission statement. It was a full page of 11-point type, over 500 words. Who the heck is gonna remember that? I just, it was, it was a joke. I didn't tell them that, they were paying. But anyway, you get the idea. So, but again, it's just really simple, 25 words or less. Let me give you a few examples. My company is a full ser, I see, you don't have to look at your mission, right? You should know it. As a full-service agency, Marketing Solutions develops and implements research-based growth strategies that help small businesses accelerate revenue generation. Okay? It's 19 words. I mean, there's really nothing missing there, right? Maple Valley's been a long-term client. I've done mission, vision, values, strategic planning. We've even worked together to do, you know, rules of procedure. They're, they're just an awesome client, much smaller than you folks, but they are also a council manager, form of government. 25 words. It took a while, but I got them down to 25. The city of Maple Valley fosters a safe and welcoming community by providing services that improve quality of life, empower businesses, and support environmental stewardship. Those were the things that were very important to them, and it's a very elegant mission statement. And it meets all the criteria. So, again, just trying to keep things moving along here. So, three steps. You're gonna answer these three questions, who you are, what you do, and whom you serve. Already got this thing ready to go. And then after that, step two is to identify the most important content. And we're gonna circle the key words or phrases that are most important to you. The goal is not to circle everything, because in our brainstorming, we're gonna end up with a heck of a lot more than 25 words. You'll end up with 50 to 70. So, we just stay focused on what is critically and the most important. Unless, we're gonna put them together in one paragraph, it will not make sense. It's not supposed to. But everything that's important will be right there in one space, which will make the third step much easier, right? The statement. Were, were you part of the session, Tracy, where we did this work for SCA? Okay, great. I've done SCA the last 12 consecutive years. Every year we do their retreat. Great client. I'm actually a sponsor of the SCA, just, which is how I met Tracy. So, I just love that affiliation. Last step, we're gonna rewrite, so we'll start with a draft statement. It will not be fully baked, but it'll be a starting point. Then we're gonna rewrite that draft statement three to five times to get to a final statement. I will share this. After doing several hundred of these, I can share that if you get into a sixth rewrite or a seventh, it's usually people grappling with one word or a short phrase. And you can grapple with that all day long, but I guarantee you, you will not produce a better product. So, sometimes you need to let go and just kind of go for it. Okay, so that's what we're doing, and we're gonna just jump in and start right off. I always begin... Is this side of the table, are you able to see the screen?
I can see the screen, but I can't see the flipboard.
Okay, then I'm gonna go like this.
Okay, that's good.
How is that? Okay. So, we're gonna start off by doing, you know, and you'll notice the spacing is very different, and it's very on purpose. There's just a lot more content here than there is here. I'm gonna start you off, and I am going to abbreviate just to speed things up. City of Des Moines, you have to have your brand in the mission statement in case it's presented, you know, outside of, of your brand. You don't necessarily need anything in addition to that. The only time that we add here is if the brand name does not communicate the category, right? Anybody remember the dot-com bomb? Well, the reason that so many of those tech companies died in 2001 is, one, they took all of that VC money and spent it on parties. Two, they had names you couldn't pronounce or spell. How are you gonna find a brand name online if you can't pronounce or spell it? Doesn't work. So, if they have a name like Wichemabuts, then you say, you know, Doing X, so people know that they make chips. That's it. Oh, I forgot to give you my ABC box. I should do this. Wanna make sure you guys can see it. ABC, and I know, you've heard this 100 times, I'm sorry, Tracy, but I have all three forms of dyslexia. I am rated severe in audio and visual and moderate and kinesthetic. I cannot, I was literally, no joke, labeled mentally retarded in third grade. In the mid-'60s, you could use that language. But I can't spell. So, the point is, you are gonna see a lot of misspelled words tonight. So, to get past it, I'm gonna ask you, if it bothers you, I want you to quietly, if there's a word or a word that's missing a letter, quietly and cognitively pull a word, a letter out of the letterbox and fix it. Sometimes there might be a word that has an extra letter. Reverse the process, take it out, put it in. By the, you know, nine o'clock, it's gonna all even out. It's just gonna be really ugly getting there. So, that's my disclaimer. I do that 'cause I get, I got paid a lot of money to teach at the UW, and I have a new cohort every quarter. I gotta explain to them why their professor can't spell. Okay, does anybody among my electeds think we need under who we are to define anything in addition to the city of Des Moines? Yes?
Yeah. We're the waterfront city.
Ooh, okay, clarity. Thank you. See, I was trying to spell right. Okay, it's still not spelled right. Doesn't matter. Brilliant. Thank you, Harry. Shall we move on to what we do? Awesome. So, I just want you to organically to give me words or short phrases, you know, about what we do as a city, you know, what, what our role is. Okay, it's been great working with you. I'm teasing. Take your time, just, you know, I really appreciate that, that category here. That was really cool. It's also an asset.
Provide safety.
Excellent. Thanks for taking us off, Tracy. What else, what else do we do as a municipality? Yes, Matt?
Provide safety, opportunity, and livability.
Awesome. Yes?
I think, I think we look out for each other.
Look out for each other. Awesome, Gene, thank you. Somebody knocked you down. You guys are rolling now. Great stuff. You're stuck with me all night, I'm not going anywhere. Think about not only the responsibilities of the city, to serve its citizens, its businesses, et cetera, strategic alliances, but, you know, maybe even, you know, what's important to you that your city is known by? Yeah, Harry?
It kinda adds on to what Gene just said.
Good.
But it's, it's built in community.
Oh.
Community, you know, whole...
Community, you know, whole, community of dentists.
Wow.
Just throwing like, the concept out, it's not whole, but...
No, no, this is exactly perfect. All we're doing, this is, all we're doing is words and phrases that will lead us towards, you know, finally, and it's all about step three. Um, building community, community building, big stuff.
Recreation.
Recreation. Yeah, being a waterfront city, I mean, you have a marina? Rock and roll.
There's another element of beyond recreation, but providing, uh, an environment, some level of the ability to interact with nature.
Great. Uh, I'm not gonna require this, because again, I work for all of you, but I would love to have at least one contribution somewhere on this page from all seven of you. Uh, again, I'm not, I'm not pulling, I'm not counting anybody out. I'm not gonna point at someone, because that's not my role, but I really would love, you know, contributions from everybody. And you got three op-, three, um, exercises, chances to contribute. I'm one of those, and my wife will verify this, I'm one of those really verbose people, which is not good. I think there's more cons than, than pros to that. But, um, sometimes that quashes other people from, you know, kinda contributing, so... I, I don't do that during retreats.
Can I second what Harry said and maybe underline the building community? 'Cause I think that can happen in so many ways.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I just wanna pronounce your...
It's Yoshika.
Yosh- Yoshika, thank you. We met earlier, and I apologize for that. Part of my dyslexia also turns things around there. So, you'll remember step two was to circle key words and phrases? You're two steps ahead. No, I'm gonna do it right now. Does anybody think that we shouldn't be circling community building or building community? You're, just the fact, you know, being forward-thinking is very cool. Thank you. Awesome. I, I do it this way, so we know that it's one word. Right on. That's a big one. I also love it, because it's unique. It's not in every city's mission statement. Yes, sir?
We, we've been committed to adding open green spaces, parks, and other places for recreation.
Excellent, Jeremy, thank you. Parks and green space, spaces. Starting to, I'm starting to get a theme here, which is really cool. Yes, Harry?
I, I don't mean to be dominating or anything, so I don't know if it's too much, but, you know, we have a lot, we have a very diverse community, and we're very welcoming. It's our job to be welcoming of the diversity. Good cultural festivals, things like that.
I put culturally welcoming. That's not how it's gonna end up, but does that kinda get the idea?
It, it's, it's not, I, I, once I got it out, I was thinking, well, it's a little broader than just different cultures, because it's also, um, you know, we have a bright aspect, we have, there are community groups that we want to be welcoming of. I'm not quite sure how to articulate that.
How about welcoming and inclusive? We'll do the wordsmithing later, but I, I don't want to... Alrighty. What else? Actually, I think I have inputs from just about everybody, which is cool. Not everybody, almost. Um, any other ideas before, I mean, you have gold up here. Before we move down to whom we serve? Yes?
Uh, a couple focal points in the city are, are college, so maybe education. And then also, uh, a growing focal point is our theater, so maybe arts. We even have a backstage alley, so...
Arts? This sounds like a pretty cool place to live.
What I'm gonna choose is...
Yeah, gee.
Steward for the environment.
Awesome. Any last, uh, ideas here before we move into whom we serve? And by the way, you know, when we get to the third step, that's where we can wordsmith, and, you know, we can add adjectives, adverbs, you know, start, you know, to make it a, an elegant statement, so... Th- this is just brainstorming. This is not, this is the trailhead. This is not the product. Or the park, in your case. Well, I'm gonna move down to whom we serve, and then if somebody has something that they wanna add to, um, what we do, we'll add it. So, you know the process, whom we serve. What are the various, uh, communities that we serve?
I would say residents.
Thanks for starting this off.
We have a really broad economic spectrum in this city. Um, and so, if I could dovetail one to residents, but residents of all income levels.
Got it. Yes, Jeremy?
Business owners.
This is where I get my exercise. I don't look eighty-two, do I? I, I get up and down a lot, and I do this for a living. It's a lot of fun.
Our staff and our officers.
Staff and officers? Oh, when you say staff, it's the officers or, or police officer. That's, okay, I caught up with you. Awesome. We just went through a nine-month process developing a strategic plan for the city of Marysville, and the police chief was in the middle of the whole thing. He's the coolest guy. He also...
I don't know, our police chief's pretty cool, so...
I'm not gonna pit him against anybody, because they always carry a gun. I, I mean, I don't know if it's in your, your side, or, uh, the city of Kent, he always had it on his ankle. Anyway, because they're armed, I always treat them really nice. Tracy?
So, when you talk about serve, could you use the word steward? I'm, I'm not sure, 'cause we steward the, um, the citizens' fine taxes, and we also steward the environment, but it's hard, but I don't know if we, I still didn't say we serve the environment, but I would say more we steward.
Well, what I, so we actually have environmental stewardship up here already.
Okay.
And, and the other thing you said, everything you're saying is really more about what we do than who, whom we serve. You know, I think, think of the whom we serve as our customers.
Okay.
Um, but, did you have something you wanted to add to, uh, what we do beyond, uh, what we've already got up there?
Uh, I'm thinking about...
Well...
Something, it would be nice to mention something, something that, um, intimates fiscal responsibility to the people, but without saying, without saying, oh, we're taking good care of your money.
Why don't we just say fiscal responsibility up here as a placeholder? Now, that's a, a great addition to what we do. Yes, Harry?
Yeah, um, families, seniors, um, individuals. Boat owners.
I'm curious, not to get us off track, but what percentage of, uh, your, um, marine tenants do you think are, that don't live in the city of Des Moines? Eighty-three percent. Are you sure, JC, that it's not eighty-three and a half percent? I'm a stats guy, I'm teasing him, but I am a stats guy. I love it. So, you're talking over eighty percent of the mortgage is from outside of the city. Wow. So, you guys are a magnet. That's, that's a huge opportunity. Cool. Okay, um, do you think we're good to start?
Actually, I think we, I think we serve the next generation.
Understanding that we can add and will have to subtract, 'cause it's a lot more than twenty-five, but I mean, just because, I mean, when we get to the s- third step, that doesn't, uh, preclude you from adding something that makes sense, right? Okay, so let's go through here. Now, I'm gonna start, we're gonna circle, um, in green, um, so, uh, you know, Yoshiko started us off with that building community. It could be building community, community building, whatever you decide. Um, I'm gonna circle your brand, 'cause it has to be there. I want you to look at all of my ugly writing and just organically share what you want circled. You know, the, the key things that you think, and we have to circle at least one thing in all three categories. Yeah, Harry?
Water.
So, the waterfront?
Our waterfront.
Awesome. What are we gonna circle beyond, uh, building community or community building?
Provide safety.
I know it's up there, it was early. Yeah. Oh, it's the first one. Thanks, Jeremy. If you need me to read anything, I know my, my penmanship stinks. What else are we gonna circle that we just feel strongly that it should be incorporated in our mission statement? Our statement of purpose?
Financial sustainability.
Awesome, thank you, JC. Now, here's an example. We wrote down fiscal responsibility, but it may end up being, um, what, what JC said, fiscal sustainability, 'cause they're both very clear and important. So, that's the wordsmithing we can do. Thanks, JC. Yeah?
I don't know how we get away from whom we serve, um, other than saying all members of our community, um, because it's the residents, the boat owners, the business owners, the staff, the officers, the families, the individuals, all, everybody. I mean, it's, it's, how do you circle one of those?
Right, that's a good point, 'cause there's a lot there. Um, so, um, an example that I did in Denver recently was, um, that involved, um, all of our residents and, um, and our, our residential, our resident and business communities, or something like that, to put everything together. Is, is that something that you think?
I mean, I, I, I think it does have to be, i- it, it has to be wordsmithed to include everybody that's on that whom we serve. So, I mean, you could circle the whole thing in green, and, and we can figure it out later, but, I mean, we can't leave any of those people out of there.
Is there a gen-, and, you know, if we did that, we'd be at thirty-five words. To your point, though, and this is a good time to talk about it, is there a category or a couple categories that would be inclusive? I mean, it's like JC, uh, mentioned, the overwhelming majority, um, of our, our customers in the marina are not from here, but we are, we want them. We, you know, they're doing the boat, they're stopping off, they're eating at our restaurants, they're, you know, doing stuff. But to your point, um, a- and to, including everybody, is there a category or two that could be inclusive without listing every single one? And I do want to, to share, we're not writing a brochure. You know, this is, you know, really tight, kind of concise, so it doesn't have to be a, a bullet of every single, um, market segment out there. But maybe there is a way of couching it in a, a shorter phrase that would be inclusive. I think what Jeremy's getting at is we getting at, is we don't want anybody to fee, feel left out, right? And that's important.
I think at least what's becoming is residents, business, and then there's a third category of the people who are coming into our...
Like visitors, tourists, or...
Visitors, tourists, yeah, but I'm not quite sure what that word is.
Good point. Matt?
I wrote, "all those that live, commerce, and visit Des Moines."
Say that again?
All those that live, commerce, and visit Des Moines.
Okay. Well, that's a category that's very inclusive. How do you guys see about that? I mean, we can wordsmith it later, but at least it's a start or something that we can circle that's inclusive. Thank you.
Live, commerce, and what? Visit Des Moines.
Yeah, that's good.
Hey, I mean, is that a start anyway?
Starting point, it's a great starting point.
I don't know how to spell those. I certainly didn't do it right. Live, commerce, a- and what?
Visit.
Excellent. You guys will have me with spelling later. But I mean, you've really got us on a good path to kinda connect all of that, and we can wordsmith it later. Um, awesome. So, anything else? I mean, you've got a brilliant start. Anything else that we want to, um, you know, several of you, just, just an observation. Several of you talked about, um, you know, uh, green spaces, parks, things like that. Um, I mean, y- you could tie them together as arts and recreation? I don't know. But, I mean, look at this, we've got recreation, we've got parks, we've got green spaces, we've got environmental stewardship. Because there's so much energy there, um, do you want to have something?
I, I think so.
Okay.
With the recreation, parks, and arts, I mean, with our art walks and our art and wine walks and the stuff that we do through downtown, and, um, the artists that we've partnered with, I, I mean, between our green spaces and parks and, um...
You know, it's almost an alliteration. Recreation, arts, and parks. It kinda covers everything, and then you guys will make it better when we get into step three. Would that be okay to circle?
Agreed.
And it might be better, so it's not so silly, but parks, recreation, and arts. But... Okay, so this is where we're at, and I think that we've got the makings of some really good stuff. City of Des Moines, yeah, um, you know, you could literally, this is how it works, you know, as a wat-, as a beautiful waterfront city, Des Moines, and boom. I mean, there's so many easy ways of connecting this. Uh, providing safety, building community, fiscal responsibility, um, recreation, parks, and arts. Um, whom we serve? All those, uh, who live, commerce. Uh, you could say commerce or shop, whatever, live, commerce, and visit. I, I'm gonna put all of those up on step two, and if you wanna add to it, whoops. Wow, twenty-one. Usually, you know, we're at thirty or something, you guys are way ahead of the curve. This is so cool. Okay, so we're already on step three, and, and we're doing really well, we're thirty-five minutes into this. So, the idea, and by the way, we have to cover all three. There has to be content for who we are, what we do, and whom we serve. It does not, however, have to be in that order, it just has to be included. Typically, you begin with your brand, you know, and we can start with just a draft, and then you all can kinda play around from there. I mean, it could be something as simple, just, you know, me kinda spitballing here. As a beautiful waterfront city, Des Moines is focused on public safety, community building, and fiscal responsibility. Good with environmental stewardship of our recreation, of our parks and arts, for all who live, shop, and visit. Or, or something along that line. I mean, that was really clunky, but as a draft, at least you'd have something to work from. Does anybody wanna share a draft kind of like that? I was just trying to stimulate ideas. Yes?
I like the word community, maybe it's, oh, you did put it.
Yeah, we've got building community.
Oh, I thought, I'm typing, I thought somebody said, anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, it could be building community, it could be, uh, community building, it can be providing a safe environment. You know, a bunch of different things, that, you know, all these will, will connect. Yes, oh, I got a couple, I'd like to hear both. And then maybe we combine you.
As a waterfront city, Des Moines is building, builds community.
Builds a safe community.
Builds, builds a safe community. I'm trying, I'm trying to separate the community building from.
The public safety.
The public safety aspect.
I'm sorry.
Builds community by providing safety, recreation, parks, and arts, and fiscal responsibility.
Whoa, this is so much better.
For all who live, work, and play here.
Oh, that is so much better than mine.
I like the live, work, and play portion of that, I like all of it.
No, I mean, that makes a difference.
My handwriting's even worse than yours, so.
I don't know if that's possible.
Oh, trust me, I've lost one of the things.
People ask me if I'm, I'm a doctor, and I say, well, I do golf. I suck at it, but I golf, how many are yours, Matt? Don't forget what you just said, because that was gold.
I just had a couple of interjections there. Turn this on, so they can hear. So, we are the waterland city, and I was thinking, city of Des Moines, a waterland community. Provide safety, you know, because we've already said community there, and, and I liked how he ended, ended his. The only question on the fiscal responsibility, why it's important, does it belong in the mission statement, or should it be in the vision? Your definitions make me think it should be in the vision statement, because that's what we wanna be in the future.
Really good.
So, that was, that was the only thing, is, does it belong in this particular statement?
Well, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a little of information, and you answer it. I mean, I just made a huge, silly mistake by going where safety, when Harry was talking, but look how much better you did than I did. So, I'm gonna share the best practices for vision, and then you can share it. So, vision is an aspirational future of, you know, what, where you wanna be, twenty years of a legacy that you're gonna live. And the way we do that is through what's called a Heavens exercise. It's like, what will the media be writing about the amazing accomplishments of the city of Des Moines? And, and so, it may be more aspirational than something that's that level, maybe not. I mean, these are your problems, not mine. And I want to get input from your colleagues.
In my eyes, this, this, fiscal responsibility probably should be in the vision statement, that's just my personal take. Based on what you, you just defined it as, and I've read in your, your information on your presentation.
Right, yeah, no, I, I, you know, and you, if you got an award for being the most fiscally responsible city in the state or the country, that's absolutely right on to visioning. I'd like to hear input from some other folks. While you're thinking about that, I wanna get that first draft up, and, and Harry, will you help me with that again?
Yeah, as, as a waterland, as a waterfront community, Des Moines builds community. I gotta put on my glasses to read my own writing now. By providing safety.
You have to go a little bit slower. Des Moines builds community.
Yeah. By providing safety, recreation, parks, and arts. In a fiscally responsible manner for all who live, work, and play here.
Okay, we've got a working draft, let's just do a quick thing. I mean, people go, why are you so on it about twenty-five? Because if I'm not, you end up working for Chevron. Wow, really close, twenty-six. So, that's really easy to work with. So, the.
I didn't hear quite so.
Yeah, that, that's true, that's a good point. That there is a little bit of redundancy, but it's our first draft, you know? And so, as a waterfront community, Des Moines builds community by providing safety, recreation, parks, and arts in a fiscably responsible manner for all who live, work, and play here. So, the process, this is our first draft. Now, what we wanna do is, is, you know, a few rewrites till, to really get it there. I mean, Harry identified the redundancy. If there wasn't any, it would be scary, I've never seen a first draft go through. I've seen a second one go through, you know, one out of a hundred times. Usually, it takes, you know, three to five. Did you have, are you thinking about?
Well, I mean, you could, the redundancy with community, but saying live, work, and play here is a little bit overdoing it, so you could just cross off here, and, I mean, that's, we're all talking about the city of Des Moines. And at the end of the sentence, live, work, and play here. Cross off here.
Okay.
I can get you one word back, because waterfront is, is one word together.
You are good.
There you go.
Yeah.
I, I will change that, so, we're down to twenty-four. So, I don't think with you guys, as advanced as you are, the word count's not gonna be an issue.
Change the first community to say.
Yes.
This is not your first rodeo.
Or what you could do is you could change the, like, the text, so you go, Des Moines is an inviting waterfront community, building a safe and sustainable, or whatever, building.
Let's get that up there. I, I, I mean, this is.
With a semicolon, so you, Des Moines is an inviting waterfront community, then you define that. Building. Let's see, what is it? Building is safe, sustainable, and I'm trying to do what, recreation, parks, and arts, that's a little good word for that, so.
Do we need recreation and parks? Let me get the rest of your thing down here. Uh, Des Moines is a waterfront community. Could you give me the rest?
Yeah, a semicolon, building a safe and sust- safe and sustainable environment.
You're on a roll.
And providing, what would you say, recreation then?
Well, listen, your colleagues, I, I was.
You, you could say just, or quality of life, so that covers recreation, parks, arts. So, and providing quality of life for all who live. For those who live, I think you need to have here for it to be, or, it's not for all who live, work, and play, because that's everybody. I'm thinking.
Well, let's finish the statement, and then we'll kinda figure it out, and one of the.
Okay, so, and providing quality of life for all who live, work, and play. And then I'm, I'm, I'm this, I'm the word here, I'm in the middle, so, for now.
I'm gonna show you a trick on how to deal with that. Quality of life for all who.
For our residents too, live, work, and play. For our, for citizens, or whatever, for our members, whatever we're going to quote, to live, work, and play.
Okay, so, this is awesome, and every time you do this, you just get a little better. So, here's a trick on dealing with that live, work, and play here, is that you don't make it the last sentence. You move it up. And then, the, the here goes away. So, Des Moines is a waterfront community, building a safe and sustainable environment, and providing quality of life for all. Or.
For its citizens too, for its residents too, live, work, and play.
Oh, oh, there you go.
The challenge, the challenge is, is that they're not all, we, we lose our businesses, we lose our staff, we lose our police officers. By saying that, that, that our citizens, they're, not everybody that patronizes our businesses or our business owners live here. So, you, you ostracize the rest of those people that are not a part of our community, other than the fact that they work here and they patronize our businesses.
So, what I'm hearing from.
To.
Pardon me?
A quality of, um, let's say, quality place to, you're helping place, I just mentioned, anybody.
Quality of place is a very accepted term, that's used a lot.
You live, work, and play.
Quality place, to live and work and play. And doesn't the play include everybody that doesn't live here?
Does, exactly, the, the boaters, the, the recreation in the parks, the parks, the.
The shoppers.
The shoppers, everything.
Excellent.
Okay, major breakthrough here. Help me, um, quality of place. Somebody just said it, had a complete thought to finish it.
I, I think the two of us came up with it together, so.
Yeah, like, a quali, what, a quality, providing a quality place to live, work, and play?
To live, work, and play.
Or.
Quality place, I think that works.
Yeah.
Wow, let me read this. Des Moines is a waterfront community, building a safe and sustainable environment, and providing, uh, provide, is it, providing a quality.
I, I think, I, I think place should be, a, a quality environment.
Well, we've already got environment right here.
Okay, okay.
We're so.
Equality.
Oh, but, so, my question was.
Yeah, that's.
Is it a quality place or quality of place? I've seen it both ways. I'm, actually, I think doing gauge some of the folks here.
Yeah.
What do you guys think about this? Are we getting closer? Let me read what we've got so far. It's not done, but it's close. Des Moines is a waterfront community, building a safe and sustainable environment, and providing a quality place to live, work, and play. See, that's, I mean, that's grammatically correct, it's, it's everything, and it kind of includes everybody. I don't even have to count, I know it's below twenty-five. I'm gonna read it again, and then I want to engage this part of the room to get your ideas and thoughts. I'm not saying we're done, we can, we can make it better or play with it, but we're a heck of a lot closer than we were ten minutes ago. Really nice work. Des Moines is, what, since we're not dealing with, since we're not dealing with word count, one thing I think about when I see your waterfront is beauty. What about, Des Moines is a beautiful waterfront community, does that make it better or worse? What do you think?
Yeah, I, I think we're trying to include water in there somewhere, but I'm, I'm not sure where it's best placed. And I don't know, I'm wondering if, we kind of went from quality of life to quality of place.
Yes.
And so, I'm wondering if it was more of a enhancing quality of life. I think that's a more, a, a, a phrasing that people would easily understand than a quality place.
Well, let's, let's, why don't you help us do another version of this? Des Moines is a waterfront community, building a safe and sustainable environment, and providing a quality place to live, work, and play. So, what you're suggesting is kinda rearranging and changing things? Uh, and so, I wanna get it on paper, because eventually, we're gonna end up with, you know, maybe two different versions, and that's where we're gonna do thumbs up type thing to, to land on a final. Everything is happening the way it's supposed to happen. So, I'm gonna put this here so you can see it. I have to number the pages.
Green, can you, is it, I think it's appropriate to say that to, a quality of life, work, and play. That kind of hits Yoshiko's, because you can say.
Maybe we can incorporate that into Yoshiko's deal.
Okay.
So, you had some ideas, I'd really like to hear them and get them on, up on another statement. Because what often happens is you end up creating a hybrid.
Right.
So, you have great ideas, let me try, do you mind just kinda giving me a full statement there?
I think, if you were to pull some things from the first, the second and third draft, something like the city of Des Moines.
Des Moines is the only thing I'm spelling right.
That's good.
And it's the hard, well, I've been practicing, it's your city, okay.
The important thing is how you say it. That's right.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's different ways. Des Moines, Des Moines. It depends on which parallel you're on. I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay, it's okay. Um. A waterfront community. I'm working on, I don't know if I, which verb I like here. We have provide a couple of times, um, but we also. So I could guess if we'd stick for that, by providing.
So a waterfront community.
Mm-hmm, oh, I'm sorry, yes. The city of Des Moines, a waterfront community, guess it's provides, yes, comma, provides. A safe and sustainable environment. With a high quality of life for all who live, work and play. And I'm gonna put the here back in there, but.
With a high quality of life?
Yes. And we can take it out or move it up.
I think we're at like twenty-seven, twenty-eight, but, um, I, I don't want to get hung up on that until we get a little bit closer. Okay, so we've got two different versions. And, um, what I'm going to suggest at this point is that, um, we pick one version and then edit that. Because going back and editing two versions, uh, we wouldn't get much else done tonight. So are you guys all okay with that for process? Okay, so you see the two versions. I'm just gonna, um, for the sake of ease, I'm gonna call that one and two. And, uh, I'm gonna ask all seven of you to vote. And vote and vote once. It's not vote and vote often. Um, uh, choose one. So all of those of you that prefer number two, please raise your hand.
Could you repeat each word?
Yeah, I will, I'll read. I'll, I'll read them both. Okay, uh, number two, the city of Des Moines, a waterfront community, provides a safe and sustainable environment with a high quality of life for all who live, work and play here. The next one, number one, uh, Des Moines is a waterfront community, building a safe and sustainable environment and providing a quality of life, uh, to live, work and play. And I'm not suggesting that either one of them is done. What I'd like to do is to find out the will of all of you, to choose the one you prefer. And then we focus like a laser beam on editing and improving that. Okay? So, um, all that prefer, um, the second one as the one that we work on editing, raise your hand, please. Okay? All of those that would like to work on and edit number one, raise your hand. Okay, you two didn't vote. Everybody has to vote once.
I know, I'm just.
You still ruminating. Remember, they're not, they're not complete. It's what we're gonna edit.
I understand that. I'm a copywriter of the right profession, so I'm, I'm sitting here, you know.
In that case.
Trying to copy out of the main, in the, in the process. And I'm, I'm looking at which one is easier to attain what I'm, to achieve what I'm trying to attain.
Fair enough. While Jean is thinking about that and J C is thinking about that, those are the only two that didn't vote. I need, so I had one for number two. Actually, you didn't vote either, did you?
I'm kind of on the fence.
Okay. Oh, look at that. Yeah. Okay, well, all I want to do is to have you pick one and then we, we will do our editing on the final one and that's where Jean is gonna feel better. So you're looking at the one, Jean, uh, that you think is.
I think I'm looking at, I think I'm looking at one.
Okay.
The problem is trying to get into an, to a active rather than passive.
Right, but don't worry about that because that's the work to come. We, we have to select one. You know, it's a process of elimination. This is the nominal group technique at work. I'm gonna ask the question one more time. I mean, so far I have a majority for number one. Um, and the person that came up with number two, which I think is brilliant, is on the fence. All that means is that you're critical, you're a critical thinker. That's a good thing. That's an awesome thing. So I'm gonna ask one more time and I'm gonna ask all of you to vote. And if you don't want to vote, I'm gonna accept that and just take the majority. For all of those that would prefer to edit number two, please raise your hand. One, um, all those that prefer to edit number one, please raise your hand. There's, um, a definite majority. Okay. Okay, Jean, this is where we need you to help.
Okay, what I would, what I would do is, you know, keep the, Des Moines is a waterfront community, committed to building a.
Ooh, already elected, go ahead, okay. Committed?
To building a safe and sustainable environment.
Building a safe.
And sustainable.
Thank you. Environment, I'm assuming?
Yes. Comma. Providing, uh.
Would it be providing or by providing?
No, I think, no, I think you could, I.
I'm trusting you.
Providing.
Providing, thank you.
Providing, uh, then it is, uh, a quality of life. For all to, you know, to live, work and play.
Ooh, did you see what he did? You're a good editor. Twenty-six. Okay, I'm just gonna read it for everybody.
So I just one question, is, is our, we're trying to get it down to twenty-five?
So I use.
Work on that.
I use that as a tool.
Right.
But when it comes down to it.
Right.
I, I'm, you know, I'm very structured, but I'm not an idiot. I mean, if we end up at twenty-six and you are happy, then alert the media. That's great. But if I let go of that twenty-five a half hour ago, we'd be at thirty words.
Yeah.
Um, this is too elegant to quibble about one word. I'm gonna read it to everybody. Des Moines is a waterfront community, committed to building a safe and sustainable environment, comma, providing a quality of life. He got your, your life in there. Um, for all to live, work and play. I see a lot of positive head nodding, Jean. Does anybody have any heartburn over this or, um, a recommendation?
Um, just one, one more offering, possibly opening it with something a little, it's not, um, the word beautiful, but what it, if you open with a waterfront community, Des Moines is committed to building. Then it kind of says beautiful without saying beautiful.
You mean as a waterfront community?
Um, well, you could just say a waterfront community, semicolon. Des Moines is committed to building a safe and sustainable. Either way, you can say as a waterfront community, but.
That actually adds a word.
Yeah, as, the waterfront community doesn't make all the rest of things happen. It's just opening with a definition. Like you're having, the very first thing is something that's beautiful, without saying the word beautiful. Anyway.
Right.
But the first, your first offering there is fine with me.
Okay. So I'm gonna try something. Did, it looks like you have something to share, Jason. No, this is just my resting idea. Good, good. No, 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 it's good. So I'm gonna try something. FYI, I can't see that. Oh, got it, okay. So it's, it would be nice, I, I sit here and I wait for you to repeat the whole thing. I'm gonna do that right now. Well, no, please, not, not just for me. No, no, for everybody, because I actually have a technique that I'm gonna do, um, and it's exactly where I was going. So this needs all the criteria for an excellent, um, statement, an excellent vision statement. Says who you are, says what you do, says, um, whom you serve. And I skipped a line in a previous slide that says it should include a citizen benefit. It includes that too. So I'm gonna ask all my electives to just bear with me, just follow me here. I'm gonna ask you to close your eyes and just listen. Des Moines is a waterfront community, committed to building a safe and sustainable environment, providing a quality of life for all to live, work and play. Sometimes when you close your eyes, you block out the noise. So I, um, we're doing great. We're right on time. It's a quality product, um, open for discussion. I mean, this is the time to bring something up if you've got some heartburn. Because once you, once you agree on it, remember the old not reverse engineering stuff? You know, I have the benefit of being able to compare this to a bunch of other cities. So Tracy, uh, shared a second way. Would you look at that and read it the way it's in your head, please? I don't want to discount if you have another idea.
Well, oh, okay. A waterfront community, Des Moines, is committed to providing a safe, sustainable environment with a high quality of life for all who, oh, where's this? A waterfront community, committed to build, okay, I'm sorry.
Did you want to just read this, um, and just change your front end?
A waterfront community, Des Moines, is committed to building a safe and sustainable environment, providing a quality of life for all who live, work and play.
Okay, would you read it the way it's written? Cause I want input from everybody.
Des Moines is a waterfront community, committed to building a safe and sustainable environment, providing a quality of life for all to live, work and play.
I'd like to, thank you for doing both. I'd like to hear, um, anybody that wants to share, not going around the room. Uh, I, you know, somebody, you can say you like it, you can say, um, I want to consider this. I can see you're at the ready.
I, I just want to give the input that, uh, well, I appreciate Tracy's iteration, that I, I think the way it's written up there is, it, it gives the statement the way we want it to be, so. I'm gonna stick with that one.
Okay. Does anybody else have a, thank you, Jeremy. Does anybody else have comments? Harry, look like you're ruminating.
Yeah, this is a little, this, I'm not ruminating because it's kind of global, you know.
Well, good for you for identifying that.
And sustainable environment, comma, providing a quality of life. It, it needs a better connection to me. It, it, those are two separate thoughts that somehow are not fully joined.
I get it.
In that sentence.
Jean, how would you, um, share why you did it this way? Cause I know you're a professional.
Okay, so what was your point, Harry?
After the safe and sustainable, the comma.
Were two different.
Tends to set that clause, that second clause off very separately from everything else. And it, it's, it's two different thoughts that needed, need a better connection. You could just put the word and, providing.
I was trying to get rid of a, trying to get rid of a word.
Yeah, I know. And I was trying to figure out a way to do it without adding a word.
Well, you've got an and here, so if you do something and, and then something and. I know where you're.
Can you understand my calling?
You can put, you, you know, you can take the and out of.
You can take the and out of the first, safe and sustainable environment by building. Sustainable environment and providing quality of life.
Yep, yes, yeah.
I, that's the thing is it, then I think you want to go to that provides, the quality of life for all.
Read it the way that you're, you're thinking based on that. I mean, that was brilliant. In other words.
Okay, so Des Moines.
Building a safe, um, sustainable environment that provides a quality of life.
Right, correct.
So I'm gonna read it the way the two of you are, um, so it's, it's Des Moines, not Des Moines.
If you ask me.
You hired me.
Did you say Dana or Deb?
Uh, I say Dana.
But that's only your experience, right? Next generation, right?
Well, what's really funny is I used to work for a company, I was the CEO of a west coast company that was actually headquartered in, uh, White Plains, New York. And saw it flying back and forth and all that. And what I learned is east coasters, when I'm saying resources, they say resources. There's a whole bunch of words like that. And I had to put on my east coast hat. Uh, okay, so I'm gonna read it, I think, the way you guys are all, I, I just think. You did it. See, that's why we open it for discussion. You've improved on something that was already really good. Des Moines is a waterfront community, committed to building a safe, sustainable environment that, or.
A safe.
No, a safe.
I'm sorry, a safe, comma, sustainable environment that provides a quality of life for all to live, work and play. Matt, just go on like that made it better.
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying is we'd have to change, if you made that change, you have to change provided to that provide.
Uh, well, it matches with, providing matches with buildings. Right?
Well, they're two different words. Um, are you saying that that's a good match?
Well, what I'm saying is a community committed to, committed to building and providing a quality of life.
Well, the, the building a safe, sustainable environment, comma, that provides a quality of life for all to live, work and play.
The comma, the comma takes it out of there. It takes it out of, I, I get what you're saying, it does.
Des Moines, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Okay, well, I will try to read it better with the breath and the commas. No, I mean, it's serious. That's the word, that's what punctuation does, right? I've gotta go to my superstar. I need validation. Okay. Des Moines is a waterfront community, committed to building a safe, sustainable community, a sustainable environment that provides a quality of life for all to live, work and play.
Yeah, I agree, because Des Moines is committed to building and providing.
Read the whole thing then.
Yeah, Des Moines is a waterfront community, committed to building a safe and sustainable environment and providing. By providing. By providing, maybe. And, and provide, well, and, okay, if you want to do. No, okay. Providing a quality of life for all who live and play. It doesn't matter.
It is kind of a bit separated.
Providing and building is magical.
You know, I, I think, I, I think that having them both in there is good.
Once, once you put that's in there, it changes the ending for provide or provides or providing. Once you put that in there.
Suggestion, Jeremy?
No, 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 I, I agree with both Tracy and, um. No, 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 I, I agree with both Tracy and, um, Yoshiko. It, it just, it, by changing the word, the, the prefix to provide, changes the ending. So if you want it to keep, if you wanna keep it with building and providing, by providing or?
Can you read it the way that you're?
Des Moines, Des Moines is a waterfront community committed to building a safe, sustainable environment by providing a quality of life for all that live, work, and play.
Yeah, I get it, it's more of an active tense. Is that better? I got a little bit of a nod from Gene, I'm feeling pretty good right now.
I'm, I'm, I'm having a, a moment here.
You having a meltdown, Gene?
No, I'm not having a meltdown.
Share with your colleagues.
Well, would you say, okay, providing a quality of life for all to, to live, work, and play, um, back, a quality of life at that point could be either good or bad. So, so the thing is, is how to get into it.
It's good.
Right, but I'm trying to see if there's some way to, to insert a positive statement. A positive indicator.
Well, I tell you what.
Quality, quality of life.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I love that. No, did you hear Tracy?
I did not hear.
It is clear to me that she works for the Department of Redundancy. I love it. So, uh, we're out of time, we need to move on, you've got a quality product, and if you wanna do a little wordsmithing with Gene's help later, uh, you can do that, but I really wanna get all three of these things done. Do I have your permission to leave it as is? So this is what, I've got a thumbs up here, this is what I've got. Des Moines is a waterfront community committed to building a safe, sustainable community by providing a quality of life for all to live, work, and play.
Okay. My colleague, Grace Watzu, he has, has a single word that will, that will accomplish what I was doing.
That's it.
Providing a high quality of life for all who live, work, and play.
Quality, quality.
Thank you.
Well, you know, we're over the, the word count, but I would rather say it's okay, cause here's the deal. The twenty-five rule is to keep you from going crazy, and I always let go at the end. I guarantee you this, there is no business owner, there is no citizen, there is no vote over, and goes, holy crap, that's twenty-eight words, I'm outta here. That isn't gonna happen. So this is what we've got, and I'm gonna say, let's stick a fork in it, and if you guys wanna, you know, I recommend you don't, but, um, Des Moines is a waterfront community committed to building a safe, sustainable environment by providing a high quality of life for all to live, work, and play. Well, I love the bingo. Well, the bingo is you guys, this is your product. Um, I have to do some coding for my staff. Um, nice work, everybody. Pretty cool, huh? Your enthusiasm is overwhelming. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't mean to push you. Okay.
Little bit hazing here.
So, um, because it's important to understand that, um, all three of these statements, um, will be put on the same webpage or in the lobby, you don't, you don't separate them. Um, I'm gonna leave it up there, uh, to start our next exercise. So the one in brackets is our new mission statement. Now we're gonna jump into vision. First off.
Can I be updated?
Wait, please read the mission statement for me if you wouldn't mind, sir. I would be happy to. Des Moines is a waterfront community committed to building a safe, sustainable community, providing a high quality of life for all to live, work, and play. Sir, that is poor sentence construction. Please remove the words committed to. Des Moines is a waterfront community building a safe, sustainable, uh, environment by providing a high quality of life for all to live, work, and play. I think that's likely better, but. So, but it's okay. Um, you brought it up, we're gonna do the vote, we're gonna do the vote. So that's a third version, which by the way, it works, you're just pulling out and doing the committed. Um, you're getting rid of committed, you're just saying, community building is safe. So, um, version one is, Des Moines is a waterfront community committed to building a safe, sustainable environment by providing a high quality of life for all to live, work, and play. JC's edit sounds like this. Des Moines is a waterfront community building a safe, sustainable environment by providing a high quality of life for all to live, work, and play. So I'm gonna call JC's version number one, and I'm gonna call this version number two, the one in parentheses. So, yes?
You can solve his problem by just putting a semicolon in. So you can, you can, it does become correct if you put a semicolon in after the word community, and then everything after the semicolon is a definition of the first phrase, so it solves his problems.
It also drops two words.
Well, no, she's saying, don't drop committed.
Don't drop any words, just put a semicolon in, then it becomes proper. Are you, would you be happy with that?
Are you okay with that? Like I said, I, I couldn't help myself, I basically, I don't believe in that form of sentence construction. It's what, uh, a mentor of mine called Yoda's.
Got it.
Where you don't commit to doing something, you either try, either do or not do. Yoda says that. So.
He's correct.
Well, so, we need to do, uh, a vote, I mean, a new version is put up. So I call JC's version one, and I call the version that we thought we had as number two. All of those that prefer number one, show a hands.
Which one is it?
Which one is?
The one, number one is the one that JC said, removing committed. One, two. Um, Gene, you're not even voting for your own one. JC, I mean. Okay, those of you that prefer the original version, show a hands. Okay, we're moving on. I still, I just wanted to honor the contribution, that's it. Everybody's opinion is equal and heard, remember my nominal group thing? Okay, so now I'm going to jump into vision. So here it is, qualities of a well-crafted vision statement. Just like the time orientation for a mission was present day, time orientation for a vision is one generation, twenty years up. You're thinking, and as I said before, you can update it in five or ten years if you want to, but we're thinking big. Have you ever heard of a B-hat? It was in Jim Collins' book, um, Built to Last. Big, big hairy audacious goal. This is a big, this is a B-hat, big hairy audacious vision. Okay, so, short and very easy to recall, fifteen words or less. I'm gonna show you some examples here. Communicates the city's desired future, and it's a really fun exercise. Developing a vision requires that you abandon reality, you know, get out of your head to create a preferred future. If you're thinking of, if you start thinking like, well, how are we actually gonna achieve that? You're not visioning. Okay, that's not, I mean, that's not visioning, that's, uh, getting details and, and things that don't matter. Think big outside the box, uh, don't worry about how, I'm ahead of my slides, think about the legacy you will leave. So here are two examples. To be the leader in marketing innovation and resources for small business. That is me, that's what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. You, you just don't need the full word count to really communicate something big. See, what we're saying is that we are the lead, uh, we wanna be the leaders. By the way, your vision statement can communicate an aspiration, or it can also communicate it in a way that you've already arrived. You know, we are the leader, it's whatever you're comfortable with, I chose to be. Uh, to be the world's most desired and successful premium car, who do you think would be that audacious? To be the world's most successful prem, what's that?
Elon Musk.
Elon Musk, that's the number one answer I got. Ten years ago, it was Mercedes or Lexus. Guess what? It's Ford. They, I mean, how audacious of them.
They don't even make cars anymore, they only sell trucks.
That's not true. The Ford Focus is a premium brand.
It is, isn't it?
Oh, well, it wasn't when I built this slide.
I didn't.
Yeah, don't, let's, let's not get high-centered here. The, the point is that Alan Mulally did this with his executive team. Anybody remember that name? He was the CEO of Boeing. They stole him from us. But I mean, that's audacious, I love that. To create a city that is the crown jewel of the Pacific Northwest. That is the city of Maple Valley. That was their thing. Okay, so. Let's, uh, what's that?
Moving to Maple Valley.
You're moving to Maple Valley? No, no.
I've lived there before.
Oh, did you?
It's more like a root sprawl than a crown jewel.
Right, but the way they put it's a much better marketing tactic than the way you put it. Maybe that's why you left. Okay, three steps again, brainstorm about your future, twenty years out. You're gonna develop headlines that the media will be writing about you in the future. I mean, these have to be big, hairy, audacious headlines. And they have to be between four, the reason they call it a headlines exercise is they have to be between four and seven words. That is the average headline, right, Gene? Headlines are just, hook 'em to get 'em to read the first sentence and the first paragraph. That's all a headline is designed to do. First sentence is designed to get them to read the rest of the paragraph. Rest of the copyrighting is cake, right? Anyway. So, uh, anyway, it's gotta be four to seven words, bullet, it's gotta be short, fit on one line. Fast-paced, this is brainstorming, no bad ideas or judgment. So in brainstorming, uh, if Matt says ABC, and a few minutes later Jeremy says ABC, JC can't say, Jeremy, Matt already said ABC. No, I know I'm being silly, but that's judgment. Fast-paced move. I'm only gonna give you ten minutes to do your brainstorming. Then we'll get into the generative work. Consolidate the list, number two, delete or group duplicates or similar ideas, cause this is when you're gonna start voting. I don't want you spreading your dots over similar concepts, it gets really muddy. Vote to surface the top vision phrase, but when you vote, you're not voting on a headline. You're voting on what you believe will be the foundation to the best vision statement. So when we go to number two, we flip from our headline mentality to which of these headlines will be the foundation of a good vision statement. It'll require a lot of, you know, writing after that. Choose and rewrite the final statement, based on the chosen phrase, rewrite into a vision statement. It should be concise and inspiring statement. Okay, so that's what we're doing. And, and this is just throw it out, um, uh, really, really quick stuff. So, big headlines, I want you to think to twenty forty-four. Now, it's a long time, but, um, you know, when I was doing this twenty-five years ago, people thought, twenty twenty-five, are you kidding me? We're here. Yes, start us off, Harry.
Large, small community.
Thanks for starting us off. Remember though, we're writing this in headlines.
Okay, a large, small community.
That's the best in the freaking world.
Sound.
Great, next. Yeah, Gene.
South King County's vibrant marine playground.
Whoops, should be a Y apostrophe S. Vibrant. Vibrant what?
Marine.
Marine playground. I'd read that article. Awesome, great work, everybody. Who's next?
Take the word south.
No, we're not, judgment, we're brainstorming. I just said there's no judgment.
I just brainstormed something bigger, that's all.
If you have a new one, let's put it up there.
King, King County's.
You know, it's gonna get, it's gonna get deleted.
Marine playground.
Yeah, no, really, there is no judgment, we gotta fly.
Boom, boom, boom.
Remember, this is not a final product, we're, we're gonna rewrite.
Des Moines, the place to be.
Pardon?
Des Moines, the place to be.
Des Moines, the place to be, I'm channeling my Aunt Tracy. Okay, people, ratchet up.
Um, Des Moines, uh, becomes center of innovative K-12 education model.
I couldn't get it all quite in, but it's good, but we know what the thought is. Um, that, that's a headline.
The ultimate recreational environment. The best place to work, live, or play.
I have to have at least one full, um, flip chart. I often end up doing one and a half, so.
The gateway to the King County Camino.
Camino?
Yeah, like the Camino that they have in, in Spain. We've got hundreds of miles of paved county trails, you could go from here to.
Okay, help me out, the gateway to?
The King County Camino.
Thank you. How do you spell that?
C-A-M-I-N-O.
I'm not the brightest bulb in the box, but I'd never heard of that before.
The Camino, it's kind of a hole that you can go, but the friends of mine have done it, it's like a.
Okay, fire it out, fast-paced, we only have five minutes left. I want six from you, Jeremy. Drop and give me six.
I took four years of journalism in high school.
Uh-huh.
Ended up as the photo editor of the school newspaper, because I can't come up.
That is hilarious. The city where people can't come up with that.
I'm sorry.
No, you're, you're the dude, I love it.
The premium destination on the Salish scene.
Place on the sound for all.
I'm gonna, um, share an observation, and, and this happens like seventy-five percent of the time. I, I'm not judging, I, I'm just not hearing B-haves. What I'm hearing are slogans.
Yeah.
No, I mean slogans don't make a good vision statement, I shouldn't say that, sometimes they really do, but this B-hat, you know, big hairy audacious vision. Sir, you said headline. Right. And so you incentivize that. I want headlines that are talking about the, just like, the amazing things that Des Moines accomplished twenty years from now. Like, you know, we did this amazing thing. I, I'm trying to get you to up your game. That's all I'm saying.
Something about education, like, and I'm here, it's sloganizing like PhD loins or something, you know, we've got the college there, they're continually growing, they're so up to education. They're so up to education, I mean, you can go to, you can go to preschool and then all, preschool and get your PhD.
So we've, okay, great, just give me the headline and I'll get it up there. And as she's.
Educational center of the South Sound. Kind of goes along with K through twelve, but it's second.
Educational center of the what?
Center of the South Sound.
Okay. Who's next? I must not be doing this right. This is usually the exercise that everybody loves. And it's like, I feel like I'm pulling your teeth. But I'll take responsibility.
If, if I may, sir, by framing it as a headline, you constrain the thought process. I can tell you that most of the residents here moved here because this is, and God, this is the American dream. And I'm not being hyperbolic. People moved here because it was the highest bang for buck equation. You got to buy a modestly priced house.
Right, oh, I got your, I got your, your thing up there.
The education quality was pretty good. You had proximity to Seattle, to all of this outdoor wonderfulness. And for this.
No, I get it.
Shorter time.
I get it.
It was the bomb. And it isn't sexy, but a primary goal is to move that window twenty years in.
I get it, and that's the purpose of strategic planning. Anyway, I, I loved what you put and I got it up there. What else? Any other headlines?
Future cities, small town feel.
Say that again?
Future cities, small town feel.
Got it. I'm getting my exercise again. This is good. Anything else, or do you wanna call it a day on this? Well, not hearing any more contributions, we'll jump to step two. So before we prioritize and you guys use, uh, your sticky dots, before you do your sticky dots, we're gonna take a break at seven. What we're trying to do now is to consolidate the list by, um, removing any duplicates. And I think I only see two up there, but what you see is way more important than what I see. I'm gonna read them. My writing's actually getting better as the night's going on. I don't know, what, what's up with that? Yeah, I mean, okay, so here we go.
You're sobering up, aren't you, brother?
A modern, small community. South King County's vibrant marine playground. Des Moines, the place to be. Des Moines becomes center of innovation, uh, of K-12 innovation model. Or innovation for the K-12 model. The ultimate recreational environment. The best place to live, work, and play. The gateway to King County Camino. The, um, premium destination on the Salish Sea. Uh, the place on the sound for all. Education center of the South Sound. We are the American dream. Future city, comma, small town feel. So there's clearly a few duplicates, nothing too crazy, but you have to identify them. I can't. Yes?
Yeah, I think my first one, a modern, small community, and the last one, uh, future, um, city, small town feel are kind of the same concept.
Brilliant, brilliant.
Cross mine off, cause I like the latter one better.
Okay, brilliant, well, that was fast.
Obviously, I, I think we need to focus on it being Des Moines, not South King County or Salish. We are Des Moines.
So when we get, so I, I get it, and that'll be step three when we rewrite. And, and by the way, uh, I, I completely get that. But by the way, if you noticed all my examples, not one of them had the brand name. They typically don't, and the reason they don't is cause it's always presented under the mission, which always has the brand name. You know, you don't separate those, you show all three at the same time.
My point with South King County and Salish and those kind of things are brands as well.
Two shit, totally agree. And, um, when we consolidate, then you get to vote. Um, thank you, Harry. So what Harry just did was not only identify a similarity, he actually identified the one to get rid of. So if he hadn't have done that, my comment would have been, which one is the bigger idea? You know, which one would make a better vision statement? And so he identi, he said he liked this one better, so that was great.
And I think number three, and the, Des Moines becomes a center for innovative K-12 and educational center of the South Sound, I think are kind of within the same concept.
Well, I definitely get how the K-12 and the education are the same.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this doesn't communicate anything about education.
I didn't, wasn't meaning that.
Oh, gotcha, so.
That's now number three, cause we got rid of number one.
Oh, I gotcha.
Okay.
Remember, I have lexicia, so be careful with it. Handle me gently. Okay, so good point.
I would combine them.
Okay, and we can certainly do that. So what we've got is a duplicate, cause they both have to do with education. One says Des Moines becomes the center of innovative K-12 model. Again, these are all gonna get wordsmithed. Uh, the next one is education center of the South Sound. What I would, rather than, you know, writing a, you know, new stuff, I mean, if that's what you want, we'll do it. This, this is your thing, not mine. What I would do is say, is one of them more powerful or the bigger idea than the other?
Educational center is a bigger idea.
I, I, I have to agree, because there's not much we can do about K through twelve. I mean, that's all school board stuff, but education, yeah.
Does anybody have a differing comment? What I'm hearing is education's a big deal, but this is more of an umbrella.
Could we say education and training? Cause as I thought about more, sort of about how laborers are putting in a new education center, or a new training center, um.
Done. And again, if it bubbles up to the top, then we'll really get real with it. Okay, good work. What else? Tracy, it looked like you had an idea earlier.
Well, I'm, I, I think, I'm, I'm thinking we might overlook something. We're, we.
You wanna add one?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Mecca for the arts and music. We're highly invested in a little section of town over there, I even named it Alley, Backstage Alley, with music and arts focus. And I think that's a really big part of our vision.
And it's not a duplicate, so great. I got no problem adding. We can't add after we vote, but we certainly can now.
Now for arts, music, and culture.
Very good.
Sure, a, and we'll, we'll rewrite these. The reason that we don't wordsmith them here is because it's a waste of time if they don't bubble up to the top. But, just like I added yours, I'm adding yours.
Could we say something about charm up there?
Which one?
Charming.
Well, no offense, Tracy, but you're wordsmithing, that's step three.
Okay.
A, and the reason that we don't wordsmith in step two is because it's a waste of time if it, if it doesn't get voted up to the top.
No.
Yeah, it, it's not me just being a jerk, I mean, there's actually some time.
You, you could add one without wordsmithing anything, saying, Des Moines, a charming water. Tourist, charming tourist.
Destination.
Destination, or waterfront, charming waterfront tourist destination.
Yeah, we did put the tourist thing in there, I think that's a big part of our vision also, being so close to the airport.
Excellent, I've got it up there, and again, if it bubbles to the top, you'll work on it. Now remember though, a vision is, uh, not a slogan, it is an aspiration. We are gonna be here by this time, you know, it's, uh. Well, I, I can put up, um, we're gonna take a break here in a second. I can put up the examples so that, you know, it's really vision-esque rather than, um, a tourist slogan. Anyway, adding it, great. Are there any more duplicates up here? I'll read them again. Um, South King County's vibrant marine playground. Isn't, um, isn't water destination and marine playground a duplicate? Which one's the bigger thought?
I, I, I actually think the, the latter is the bigger thought.
Bigger thought, okay, great.
Absolutely.
Does anybody else have a counterpoint? Looks like, um.
I was actually, I was actually thinking of, it's getting into wordsmith.
Well, let's not do that.
Right.
We wordsmith after we vote.
No, no, I understand that.
Okay.
So maybe place to be and destination is the same, very similar?
Well, let's, let's do one at a time, so I am getting rid of this marine thing in preference to this marine thing, is that correct?
Please read the two marine things.
Yes. South King County's vibrant marine playground. And the other one is Des Moines is a charming waterfront destination.
I prefer the first.
You prefer the first, okay, well, we'll do the vote. Um, I just read the two. Um, show of hands, how many of you prefer the first one? One, two, three, four, well, we already have a majority. Okay, so we go with the first one. And again, you know, if it bubbles up to the top, you can wordsmith it and add charming and do whatever you want. So it's not like you're losing something. I'm glad that you're taking ownership of this though. Um, now, back to who had another idea? Go ahead.
I think Des Moines, the place to be, and the best place to work, live, and play are kind of redundant, and, and I would prefer to remove the first.
Okay. Uh, is everybody cool with what Harry is suggesting? I'll read them. Des Moines, comma, the place to be. The best place to live, work, and play.
Or what?
Well, we'll wordsmith later.
No, he does say or.
Okay.
Live, work, or what?
The only thing about that is if we choose that as a valid option, we're always gonna use that live, work, and play, um, phrase right above it. Is it gonna go vision, mission, values, and you're gonna put them someplace, you're gonna say live, work, and play?
They're all gonna be together.
Right, and so we've, our, that's prob, that phrase.
So you're, you're suggesting the place to be?
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you.
No, I, I get it, that's great. So let's go ahead and quick do it, a show of hands, we need to get you on break. A show of hands, how many of you prefer Des Moines, uh, the place to be over, um, live, work, and play? Uh, one, two, three, I got a majority. The hope is that every, oh, you're, you're voting with your head.
No, 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 that's fine.
Okay.
I'm not.
And again, when we wordsmith, you can put a bunch of stuff back in there. But, uh, I think, uh, Tracy, your point was salient. Okay, are there any other, uh, similar concepts up there? I'm gonna read them all again.
Yeah, I, I mean, it seems to me that the ultimate recreational environment, the premium destination on the Salish Sea.
And the gateway to the Camino.
And the gateway to the Camino.
They're all similar.
And the place on the sound for all are all.
Destination.
They're all very destination-ish, all very recreational.
Got it, so.
So they're, they're pretty redundant of each other, so.
Let's, let's do the ones.
Idea that we can consolidate.
Okay, give me those again.
Um, the ultimate recreational environment. The, uh.
Gateway.
To the King County Camino.
Got it.
The premium destination on the Salish Sea.
Got it.
And.
The place on the sound for all.
Oh, the place on the sound for all.
Okay. All righty. So, we have the ultimate recreational environment, the gateway to King County Camino, the premium destination on the Salish Sea, I can't say Salish Sea. Um, the place on the sound for all. Which one of those is the bigger idea that you think would be the foundation for a good vision statement?
My preference is the place on the sound for all.
Okay, other contributions?
I'm thinking the premium destination on the Salish Sea.
Okay. I've got two inputs. Anybody else?
I'm with the premium destination on the Salish Sea.
Okay, so I've got two for the premium destination. I've got one on.
Place on the sound for all.
And I, I like the place on the sound for all as well.
How many people said place on the sound for all?
Two.
One, two, three. Any other votes? Okay. The winner is the place on the sound for all, and if it bubbles up to the top, you know, you can add language for the others. But this is just about consolidation. And the idea or the goal is not to consolidate this down to just a couple phrases. We, we need to vote. So, um, I may be wrong, but it looks to me like we have, um, gotten rid of all of the duplicates. Does anybody see something up there? I'm gonna read them again. This is what is remaining. South King County's vibrant marine playground. Des Moines, the place to be. The place on the sound for all. Education and training center of the South Sound. We are the American dream. Future city, small town feel. Um, the, um, the mecca for the arts, music, and culture, and that's it. I think that those are separate deals, aren't they? Okay, so, we're going on break. Um, our fifteen minute break just got turned into ten minutes. So, well, I just, you know, get all this stuff done, we actually are really back on track. So please look at your watch. Have you ever been to a convention where the fifteen minute break turns into twenty-five? Happens all the time. I'm gonna ask you all to be back in nine minutes so they can start in ten. Just look at your watch, cause that's what you're, or that clock.
Thank you.
Oh, you bet. Facilitators don't get breaks. Facilitators don't get breaks. We can add, subtract, but the key thing here, you know, is we're defining a geographic area which you can change, right Tracy? I mean, you could say western Washington if you want, I mean, that's a behab, it doesn't matter. Whatever is good for you is gonna be it. Vibrant, marine, uh, I can't, oh geez, marine. And playground. So the things that we don't want, I mean, we're talking about marine. We're talking about our water. So it can be up to fifteen words. And you're articulating what it is you aspire to achieve inside of twenty years. You know, what amazing accomplishment are you gonna achieve? So same rules apply, we're gonna do a draft and work from there. Tracy's already writing it. That's cool, no, that's a good thing. So who wants to take our first stab? You already had some ideas and opinions about this, share them.
I know, but I might dominate the airspace.
Actually, you haven't. You have not dominated. Okay, so that is just merely what's guiding us. We can add, subtract, but the key thing here, you know, is we're defining a geographic area which you can change, right Tracy? I mean, you could say western Washington if you want, I mean, that's a behab, it doesn't matter. Whatever is good for you is gonna be it. Vibrant, marine, uh, I can't, oh geez, marine. And playground. So the things that we don't want, I mean, we're talking about marine. We're talking about our water. So it can be up to fifteen words. And you're articulating what it is you aspire to achieve inside of twenty years. You know, what amazing accomplishment are you gonna achieve? So same rules apply, we're gonna do a draft and work from there. Tracy's already writing it. That's cool, no, that's a good thing. So who wants to take our first stab? You already had some ideas and opinions about this, share them.
I know, but I might dominate the airspace.
Actually, you haven't. You have not dominated.
Oh, right. So if we're gonna have a location to convert, to put ourselves inside of my, my vision would be bigger, that people get up on Saturday morning from all over the county, not just South King County. To Des Moines. So I appreciated Matt's offering earlier, like not even putting South King County on there, that you, so that it's just a vibrant marine, and a vibrant marine playground. But I love the word destination, so it would-
Great, let's get it up there.
If you guys have a destination there.
Would you speak it up for me?
A vibrant marine-
Would you speak it up for me?
Well, yeah, I don't know if we need to put King County in there. Well, yeah, I don't know if we need to put King County in there. I'm not sure. 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 I'm not sure.
Okay, everybody, we're at the end of our break. If my electeds would please take their seat and we will continue with our second exercise. I'm drinking caffeine. So we'll go a little faster, how's that?
Where'd you get that?
Oh, it's all in the pumpkin drink.
The pumpkin drink has all sorts of sodas and water and snacks.
Cool. Keep going.
Let me do this, please. Can I explain the exercise?
Oh, hell, no, wait, anything with that.
I can explain it in less than a minute. And then go get yourself some nourishment, because you'll have plenty of time to vote. Okay, everybody, if I can have your attention. Everybody has two strips. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Actually, you have two different sets of these. You're only using one. You're gonna use the second sheet for the last exercise. Oh my gosh. I, I blew it, I'm not gonna. So you can only use one strip, one, two, and a three. I got this confused with an exercise I did yesterday. I am sorry. So you can only spend one row. You're gonna adhere in one, 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 two, and one, three. I apologize, I should've cut them in half. You can only expend three dots. And you're gonna put your one, two, and three directly underneath the one you're voting on. I don't want it on the side or on the top, because I won't be able to tabulate. We'll go from left to right, I mean, I can even touch it. The one is your first choice, the two is your second favorite, and the three is third. By the way, the dots are weighted. Your one counts as three points, your two counts as two, your three counts as one. So it's very important that you use them in order, one, two, three. And everybody's gonna go up here and choose their favorite three. And JC, that's it, go ahead and get some food. Now, does anybody have any questions about that? Please go ahead and vote, and after you're done voting, have a seat. I can't believe I blew that.
Oh, you did, Jessica.
Question, question.
Check you out, you are so smart. I should've suggested that to everybody. I have enough thoughts for all of you now. I'm glad you're laughing, it's not gonna happen. It's not maybe, but that was good. Those are awesome shoes. I am serious, you look sharp. Are those U-Dub socks?
These?
Yeah.
What?
They are. I've got a half a dozen pairs. Yeah.
You should watch with this guy, his eye is disgusting. It's disgusting.
That's okay. Hey, we take dogs and cats.
I seconded it from both schools, I voted for that.
I'm not arguing, I work for you.
My career is U-School, that's not I care.
I used to work for U-Dub fourteen years ago. Every Christmas, my family will get me all sorts of gear. I got shirts, I got jackets, I've got enough socks to, I've got like three pair of white ones, three pair of purple ones, and- I've been working on this, you got half? Everybody always says, "So, did you go to U-Dub?" I thought, no, I wasn't smart enough to get into U-Dub. Which, by the way, is true, because I'm a high school dropout. But I guess they, in their intimate wisdom, decided to hire me as an adjunct faculty member. Yeah, fuck that. I wrote a book fourteen years ago, and they bought the book for several of their marketing classes. Now, I was local and the rest you can fill in.
Very cool, it's such a good story, you should write your story under it.
I can write another book.
It's an inspirational story.
Oh, meaning dyslexic group that drops out of high school and it ends up as a professor at a university?
Exactly.
It sounds better the way I said it. The fact is, you can only be a professor if you have a PhD. I was a part-time adjunct faculty member. Okay, so go ahead and pick your first, second, and third. Take your time. My best friend growing up, frat, U-Dub all the way, architectural engineering, really successful guy. Still best friend, up at the altar when I got married. He's my best golf player. He played for the golf team at the U-Dub. That means I'm playing a lot of difficult courses that I'm hitting over a hundred on. It's humbling, but I love the guy.
You'll get down to the nines.
What's that?
Go watch for toe wedge.
Oh, I use my foot wedge all the time.
It's a wonderful tool.
It's probably the best, it's probably my most accurate call.
I never hit balls with it, I agree, I never leave mine.
Oh, what a ride.
It's like we were talking about the first nine, instead of a hundred.
Yeah, well, it's not, well, that, that's the old joke. "Hey, yeah, man, I shot a, I shot sixty-five."
Oh, you're amazing.
On the front nine. One thirty isn't gonna cut it. I can get, I can get below a hundred on the municipal course. I'll get between eighty-five and ninety-nine depending on the course. Thank you, JC, awesome.
My handicap, everybody said, because I've got a sack full of clothes.
Yeah, my handicap is my driver's, that's funny. Okay, the dominant winner, by not, by a lot, I mean, it's like no, it's not even close. So at fourteen votes, and the next highest one was nine, and then you get into seven, et cetera. But this is it. So we're gonna go ahead, I'm gonna leave this up here so you can see all the other writing, all of your other work. Because when we start the wordsmith, I want you to be able to, you know, you can pick and choose from other deals. Can you see this over here, Tracy?
No, but I'm, I can listen to you, I'm not, I'm in love with that concept anyway, so I'm good.
Cool.
I'll just type here.
Yeah, and this is where you can say, "Get rid of south," this is where you get to have, "No, I'm serious." Okay, so that is just merely what's guiding us. We can add, subtract, but the key thing here, you know, is we're defining a geographic area which you can change, right Tracy? I mean, you could say western Washington if you want, I mean, that's a behab, it doesn't matter. Whatever is good for you is gonna be it. Vibrant, marine, uh, I can't, oh geez, marine. Okay. And playground.
No, I think it's green, no, it's marine.
Oh, it's green, okay.
It's green.
Thank you. So the things that we don't want, I mean, we're talking about marine. We're talking about our water. So it can be up to fifteen words. And you're articulating what it is you aspire to achieve inside of twenty years. You know, what amazing accomplishment are you gonna achieve? So same rules apply, we're gonna do a draft and work from there. Tracy's already writing it. That's cool, no, that's a good thing. So who wants to take our first stab? You already had some ideas and opinions about this, share them.
I know, but I might dominate the airspace.
Actually, you haven't. You have not dominated.
Oh, right. So, so if we're gonna have a location to convert, to put ourselves inside of, my vision would be bigger, that people get up on Saturday morning from all over the county, not just South King County.
Okay.
To Des Moines. So I appreciated Matt's offering earlier, like not even putting South King County on there, that you, so that it's just a vibrant marine, and a vibrant marine playground. But I love the word destination, so it would-
Great, let's get it up there.
Destination there.
Would you speak it up for me?
A vibrant marine-
Are you living in King County?
Playground destination, huh?
Are you living in King County?
Well, yeah, I don't know if we need to put King County in there. I'm not- Okay.
So, let me tell you what's right about this. So first, it's, it's kinda cool. Um, you know, it'd be better if it was the best or something, but, um, you are articulating it as it's already happened. And you remember, about an hour ago, I said your mission, your vision statement can be an aspiration like mine, to be the leader. But a lot of folks actually, you know, we, you know, uh, we are the leader. You know, you've, you've actually attained that. And you're saying, "We've already attained it." So great start, thank you very much. I'd like to engage some other folks here. What do you think? I think I'm gonna throw up, uh, the other examples. I realize I took a pause. That's not what I meant to do. I, I just, um, so you can see some examples. You know, just for wording. "To be the leader in marketing innovation and resources for small businesses." I'm not gonna get into why that's relevant, 'cause, I mean, it's, it's, every word is very strategically chosen. "To be the world's most desired and successful premium car brand." That's one of the best vision statements I've ever seen, just because it's so audacious. I mean, what Harry said is exactly what everybody, that's why I don't show you who it is. Uh, "To create a city that is the crown jewel of the Pacific Northwest for everybody in the world except for Matt." Love you, Matt. I only tease the people I care about. So I just wanted, uh, to stimulate some thoughts there. I mean, this is awesome. And if you go, "Hey, we're done," then you're right, because this is your vision statement. I would just like to entertain some other thoughts.
Well, if you're going for audacity, rather than A vibrant, you can say B vibrant.
There we go. What'd I do, T-H-E-E? No, I'm serious. I mean, that, that's a real word, and it really emphasizes it, don't you think?
Like, the one and only.
Exactly. So let's put, the way you want it, so it's the vibrant?
The, yeah.
Do you see how that's more vision-esque, a little bit more punch?
I, I think you could add the, uh, Pacific Northwest onto the end of that.
Northwest destination?
The Pacific Northwest.
See, we're getting more audations every minute, and I am loved. Could you imagine if somebody just came across this? Uh, "The vibrant marine playground destination in the Pacific Northwest." I'm reading that, and, um, you know, I'm in Monroe. I mean, hey, I'm gonna take a day trip. That's bold. Yes, sir.
I'm trying to think of this as a little narrative. I think that...
Let's hear it.
It's not just a marine playground, it's a marine community, it's a marine transportation, it's a marine playground. It's a lot, a lot more than just that.
Okay, very cool. Um, so in other words, the vibrant marine community destination in the Pacific Northwest, that is bigger. And once you land on it, we can rearrange words and all of that. But it just, every time somebody opens their mouth, it gets better and better.
How about to be the most, and of course, I like the word charming. So the most charming vibrant waterfront destination in the Pacific Northwest. So the most charming vibrant waterfront destination.
The most charming vibrant...
Waterfront destination. In this P-N-W.
In the what?
P-N-W, because every notebook is...
Got it. I, do you need to write a comma here? It says, "The most charming vibrant..."
Right.
Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna riff on what Tracy said.
Go for it, go for it.
And change this to, uh, the premier gateway to the Salish Sea.
Big thinking. Any other ideas? So, um, I wanna share that we've got two different ideas here. One of them is focused on marine, you know, very specific to, and it's also articulated by Tracy as the waterfront. So marine waterfront. And the other one is about the Salish Sea, which is way bigger than our waterfront. So I'd like to take this just one bite at a time. You know, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. So I'd like to do a show of hands. Um, how many prefer using the word marine or waterfront? We'll put that into one category, and we'll, if that's the choice, then we'll choose within that. Or the other vote would be Salish Sea. So, two options, we're bifurcating this. It's marine slash waterfront, you wouldn't use both. You choose. And the other one is Salish Sea. Show of hands, how many prefer using marine or waterfront? One, two, three, four? Okay, well, that's, that's a majority. So, but that doesn't mean that we have to get rid of, uh, the gateway, or the premier gateway. Now we have another bifurcation, and that is marine or waterfront. We're gonna use marine or waterfront. You wouldn't use both, right? Or would you?
Can I ask a question? When you say marine playground, do you mean in terms of boating, fishing, diving? Or what, or is it bigger than that? Would you have associated activity in line for marine or... Yeah, you're the one who...
It's your idea, Jay.
Marine playground, marine playground, yours.
I see, I thought, well, see, I could improve the job too.
Sure, yeah.
And the reason I did the Salish Sea is to put some sort of location in it. But anyway, in that...
Well, isn't Pacific Northwest a location? That, that's a region.
Unfortunately, at Salish Sea, visitors and even some of the residents don't know what that is. It's a shame, it's a shame, they don't, but...
Right. No, that's a good point, that's a good point. Well, that's why you voted for marine or waterfront. But to get back to your point, because I'm asking, are we using marine or waterfront? Or do we use both?
Well, I think that...
Seems redundant to use both.
Yeah, but what I was doing with marine is that we do have, uh, both what is considered, you know, when you say waterfront, you're usually talking about, uh, boating facilities, that sort of thing. Where we have some natural...
The marine is bigger.
We have some natural access that is not, you know, boating specifically, or our same...
Like you said, diving, or parasailing, or whatever. You don't wanna go there. So does that mean we're gonna stay with marine? Show of hands, again, you have to vote on marine or waterfront. How many vote for marine? Okay, we got a majority. So let's stick with marine. Now, I'm just gonna keep doing this bifurcation so we can narrow it down to the key elements. And that way, we are editing one statement and not many. Um, so we have a couple of different things. Uh, we've got vibrant by itself, we have charming and vibrant. Um, that's the second choice. And the third choice is premier gateway. So what I'd, I'm gonna do, pardon me? I'm gonna do, I'm hearing things. I'm gonna do a, a tabulation. Um, we're gonna do all three. Who wants to vote for just vibrant?
Versus vibrant charming?
Yeah, and but the, the third one is premier gateway.
Oh, okay.
So we've actually got three. So I got one vote for vibrant only. How many of you prefer...
We didn't redo that, because I, we didn't understand what you were asking.
Yeah.
Okay, sure. So we have three options. We have this, we have this, and we have this. And, uh, the key distinction is vibrant, charming vibrant, or premier gateway. One, two, three. So I'm gonna ask each of you to vote once. How many of you are just saying vibrant and not say charming vibrant? One, two. Okay. How many of you, now it's about, how many of you prefer charming, um, vibrant, understanding that there is the premier gateway? You only get to vote once. One. Okay. And I'm assuming the rest of you, the other four of you, are choosing premier gateway?
No, I want charming.
Well, you already voted.
I did not.
You did not.
Well, you want charming, okay, so that's two. And then I've got four. I got you up there, I'm glad you said something. You know, if you don't raise your hand, I can't count you.
Well, I don't know what vibrant means. I know what charming means.
Okay. Would somebody like to share, whoever came up with vibrant, share with J.C. what vibrant means?
Uh, active?
Bustling, it means full of life.
Full of life, growing. Do you, do you wanna keep your vote on vibrant?
I go, I defer to the, you know, I'm just saying, I thought charming...
Well, I did get four for premier gateway. So, um, are we good with Pacific Northwest? Because I've heard more about that than, I got that, I got those three, Pacific Northwest?
Well, the objection to Salish Sea was, was familiar.
Yeah, people don't understand it.
Okay.
If they don't understand it, they're not gonna buy it.
That could be, that could be, uh, taken back to the, to the more generic, huge sound. Uh, but it's twenty years from now. It's, yeah, it's twenty years, that was part of the problem, twenty years from now. I think there's a huge movement on to go with Salish Sea.
I do too, like, I, I think that there's something subtle about honoring our Native American heritage when we choose that name without saying that we're doing it anywhere else, so far, anyway. That when we choose that, I, I think it's a growing movement to, to begin to choose these Native American titles for our landmarks. And, and we, even though we don't exist inside of a, a formerly recognized, uh, sovereign nation, we still honor that, and, um, it's a, it's a way to do it, kind of, like, subliminally.
You know, if you're okay with it, absolutely not.
There is not one twenty-year-old that's gonna care forty years, twenty years from now of what the Salish Sea is.
So I took all of your information, we, we need to roll here.
I see that.
I took all of your information, and this is what I wrote. I'm not saying it's the final, but it'll give you something to work from. And it's very vision-esque. The premier gateway to the best marine destination in the Pacific Northwest.
Premier, say that slowly.
The premier gateway... To the best... Marine destination... In the Pacific Northwest. That is about as vision-esque as you can get. So I'd like to hear what you guys are thinking.
Rich, could you read that, uh, just, just...
Just the right way, like you would, you got. "The premier gateway to the best marine destination in the Pacific Northwest."
That doesn't make sense to me, has a sentence structure.
Does anybody else have the same feeling?
I think that is too...
Okay, then give me, um, let's go with you, J.C., you brought it up. Give me a sentence structure that you think is better.
I would just say that you can't be a gateway to the best marine destination. I mean, it, it sounds like an escrow.
So give us an alternative.
I, I, I can't.
Okay, did you have a...
I would say the best marine destination.
It's marine, it's marine, that might help. It's marine destination, not marine. Does that help?
I'm just saying that you're not a gateway or you're a destination.
Right, let's hear it.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, you can't be a gateway...
And...
To a destination. To a destination.
Got it.
Yes.
So give me an alternative that we can work with.
I need to come up with that.
Okay.
I, I would say, um...
How about this? How about the best marine destination in the Pacific Northwest?
You asked me, and I'd like to actually go...
You're ruminating.
So it would be the premier marine destination in the Pacific Northwest.
That's everybody's strong, and it deals with, uh, your concerns about the gateway there. So our working vision is the premier marine destination. Would it be in the... Yeah, okay. I just dropped the in. In the Pacific Northwest. Thoughts?
I'll go with it, but it does lack charm.
I'm sorry, you got voted out.
Oh, I know I did.
I mean, that's why we use the nominal group technique, if we didn't, we'd really never get anything done. So our working vision statement is the premier marine destination in the Pacific Northwest. It meets all the criteria for a good vision. Does it meet your criteria? Because that's more important.
One thought?
Yeah?
It's inward-focused. It's coming into the city. It is not the city going out into the sound, the Salish Sea. That, that's just my reaction to it.
Is that what you're saying, that you want, Harry, is to go out?
I'm saying that's what it is, that's how it reads to me, and I'm sharing that with everybody in the group, that that it is an inward-focused vision, rather than we're stopping, we're, we're the place to go reach everything, we're the place that we want everybody to come to. And that's not a bad, and, and that's not, the second is not a bad thing. I just think you're, you're, you kind of lost an element.
What element did you think we lost?
The going up, the, the broader definition of the Pacific Northwest, the Salish Sea.
All those people are gonna spend their money in the sales taxes in another city.
I'm not complaining about that.
We do have the Pacific Northwest.
The distinction we may not have thought of.
See, right, the Salish Sea isn't there, because they got voted down two to one, but the Pacific Northwest is. Well, you had said we lost, uh, the Salish Sea in Pacific Northwest.
Outgo.
Got it. Well, Ray, do you have an idea of how you would edit?
No, I don't think I necessarily want to change that.
Okay.
Because we want people to come here. But I think it's important that, if I see it that way, others will too. And is that, is that exactly what we want?
Do you think that would keep people from coming?
No.
Oh, okay. Other thoughts? You know, I'm looking around, it doesn't seem like you guys are this, that excited about this.
Well, I have a question, so I've written, uh, in the paper, but, um, is this sentence the vision statement? Or is it one element of the thing?
No, it is the vision statement if you choose to go with it. The vision statement is a very short, concise statement that articulates what is amazing about you.
Uh, twenty years from now.
Well, actually, you're identifying this as it's already happened. I shared at the beginning of the exercise, you could articulate it as an aspiration for your future, or that you've already arrived.
And we decided on the present tense?
Yeah, that you've already arrived.
It's a little...
I don't think we made that decision. I, I really don't think we made that decision.
Oh, okay. Good point. I was going from every one of the things that you wrote.
The way it was phrased, but I don't think that was a conscious decision.
Okay, well, let's check this out. How many of you would prefer it written as an aspiration? You just simply would say, "To become the premier marine destination in the Pacific Northwest," or not?
I think that would be better.
You like that one better, okay.
I like that better.
So the aspiration, uh, I'm glad you brought that up. Um, so let's just do another bifurcated vote. Um, the first vote is that you've already arrived there. And the second option is that it's an aspiration. The second version is to become. Kind of like, I, you know, to be. You could, you don't have to say become, you could say to be.
Well, okay, this is where we're getting to the question about aspirational versus delusional.
Wait, say that.
Was ever talking aspiration versus delusional.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna give it my third try. I've been trying to say something. This sounds like a wonderful tourism board vision statement. And that's just, in other words, if this is the existential vision of the city of Des Moines for now to twenty years, is that real?
Until you change it.
What's that?
Or until you change it.
No, no, but what I'm saying is if it's a for reals vision statement, you amass the entirety of your resources to accomplish that goal over time. And if we were Leavenworth, I'd be on board because they made that, they, they did that, okay?
That was their vision.
Yes.
To be the ver- the variant destination in the Pacific Northwest.
And so I'm just saying, is that what the city of Des Moines aspires to do?
Yeah, ask your colleagues. I don't get it.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just like, you know, I've had an hell of a time voting here for twenty-five years, but I've never thought of this as a single purpose, um, kind of a thing. Ninety percent of our residents never touch the water. And they have a perfectly unsatisfactory time. So I'm just, if you, if, I, I, I thought that this was like the one statement in a paragraph.
No, everything we've gone through, J C, has been the ex, a visioning exercise.
Okay, well, I, I don't, it sounds like this is the direction the majority wishes to go down. I'm just saying that.
Well, maybe or maybe not. I mean, we're kind of opening the conversation. I mean, this is your content, nobody else's. So let me ask you, I mean, the, the, the process whittles down to something that's most important to you. So let me ask you this. If you actually were recognized, i- if the city of Des Moines was recognized as the premier, um, marine destination in the Pacific Northwest, could you see that as an economic tool that would, you know, lift, you know, the rising tide lifts all ships? I mean, is that, is that a negative thing or a bad thing? And maybe it is, I don't know.
I, I get back to the aspirational versus delusional. I think the to be handles, handles much better.
Right, no, I think, yeah, and Harry suggested that.
I think so.
I'm gonna put to be in there because I think, if everybody'd like to.
To create. To create. To be or to, to create is active. That's what our vision is for the council, is to do work.
Right. So what, what we're reading now is to create the premier marine destination in the Pacific Northwest, which is gonna do is retail, it's gonna, you know, ultimately the potential of more real estate. I mean, more people moving here. I, I mean, I can see this as an economic engine.
So I appreciate what you're saying there. And I think part of this exercise is that we need to recognize for what we're at here. And I think economically, we, what you do is you, you say, where are your revenue streams gonna come from? Because you have to survive.
Right.
We wanna survive the city. What's your, what's your greatest opportunity to create sustainable revenue? And you pick your greatest asset in order to create that revenue stream. And so we, we are unique among cities in the Puget Sound, the very few that exist right on the waterfront. We almost have a responsibility to the region to be active with that for, for the sake of the entire region. Just like the state of Washington has a responsibility to the United States to do something economically, right? The city of Des Moines has a responsibility to King County to be active that way on their waterfront. And, um, so I've been picking that as part of the vision. Yes, so I'm kind of building that opinion is that picking our waterfront as a focus for our revenue. And then how do we do that? We create a vision that revolves around the waterfront, even though maybe a bunch of people in the city might not, might not use it. But it, for our vision statement, it becomes something we use as a revenue stream to live as a city. Does that make sense? Okay. Thus, so that way, that's the reason I'm here for that.
Got you. So what we've got, our working, uh, vision statement right now is to create the premier marine destination in the Pacific Northwest.
I think we should go around the room and get a vote on, it should be to create or to be. I think we're all pretty much okay with the rest of it.
Okay, um, that sounds like a really good point, Matt. Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
I've got minor head nodding. Hey, um, you, I don't want you to feel like this is being forced down your throat. This is your vision. I mean, you developed the ideas, you voted on it, and every time you redo it, you've improved it. Um, so Matt just made, um, a, a really good proposal. And that is, he thinks that the rest of it is okay and that we need to determine whether we're gonna say to create or to be. Did I articulate it that well?
You did.
Uh, is everybody, does that make sense to everybody? Okay, well, I'm getting affirmation all the way around. Um, let's start with a show of hands that prefer to be. One, two, three, four. Four, okay, five. Um, okay. And to, um, CJ's point, and I really love the fact that he's thinking about this as, you know, kind of a, a lens to make priority decisions because that's the right way to go. That doesn't mean that all of your resources go into this. It just means that it's a priority. And that there are things that you may wanna do in terms of beautification, functionality, other things for your waterfront to really realize this vision. And it is a be half. You know, the idea is, don't worry about how you're gonna get there. Just have a big aspiration. City's not gonna fold if you don't get there in twenty years. But, uh, with this as kind of a focal point, you're gonna end up in a much better place then than you would now. So, right now, I'll read it one more time and see if you're good with this. To be the premier marine destination in the Pacific Northwest. Show of hands that they're good with that. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, that's a super majority. Alrighty. Nice work, everybody. I'm really glad you brought up what you did, Harry. Because we ended up with something better and, and more realistic. Just 'cause I'm confused doesn't mean I'm right. Okay, nice work. So we are gonna exercise that and about an hour to get there. So, I'm gonna unpack this exercise. This is a core values exercise. Some of you in your businesses may have done this. It's a very, uh, common part of a strategic plan. And this really, you know, the code of conduct, what, it, it, there's a bigger C word. It's about culture. And, um, I don't know if anybody, uh, was, what the heck was his name? Drummond? No, I forget. Peter Drucker, Peter Drucker. He said that culture eats strategy for breakfast. Ergo, culture is way more important. There's another thing, and this is actually one of my quotes, a- and that is, "A great team can survive a flawed strategy. A poor team will never survive a great strategy." It's about people and it's about culture. Okay, let's jump in. Here's our exercise, three-step process. You getting the idea that I do everything in threes? There's a reason for that. Brainstorm about, no!
No, we're moving to core values.
Sorry, I went backwards to show you. Yes, we are moving to core values. Okay, so, let's break it down. Developing a set of core values, qualities of well-crafted value statement. Time orientation is perpetual. I mean, if you come up with a solid set of core values, I mean, that, that should live. Does that mean you can't change it? Of course not. You can change it whenever you want. But, when you're talking about mission, vision, values, these are supposed to be shelf-stable. It's not something you change, like a, a, a goal or a strategy with frequency. It's, they are short, single-line bullets anchored by adjectives and attributes. And I'm gonna give you an example. Uh, define the city's character and code of conduct. So let's look at some examples. Well, one example, Maple Valley. I use this because this is brand-new, we just did this. We will focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And they purposely, uh, you know, you do this based on anchor words. They purposely italicized their anchor words. Anchor words will make more sense when we start the exercise. Next, we will provide programs, services, and resources for a healthy community. We will be good stewards of the resources entrusted to us. And the last one is, we will be authentic in our intentions, decisions, and actions. Let me make sure that was the last one, it was. The point is that they came up with, and this is our exercise. Some of you have read the deck, I can tell. I think Matt or Harry has, so they already know what's coming. But those are the anchor words. So, now I'll enliven anchor words through your three-step process. Brainstorm qualities and characteristics. These will be single-word qualities, characteristics, adjectives, attributes, you know, they're active. Like, for instance, uh, influence, integrity, stewardship. These are all active attributes. Develop a list of twenty to twenty-five single-word adjectives. We can do one sheet and I'll do two columns.
Transparent.
Transparent is brilliant. That's a very powerful one, especially for a, a city.
Big one in this gallery.
Yeah, well, it's the first one I'm gonna write down. We're gonna take ten minutes, again, very fast-paced, no judgment discussions. We're not wordsmithing or discussing, oh, I don't like that, I like it. You're gonna vote again. You, you will surface what's important. The second step is, we're gonna consolidate the list. Same thing with the vision statement. Group and delete duplicates, kinda go through that. There, um, there'll be words that mean the same thing. Vote to surface the top four to six words. Um, vision statements usually have four to six bullets. A eight shows four, five is kind of the mean, it's, it's whatever you decide will be right. And then, um, once you've done that, uh, we're gonna write core value statements and create short bullets based on each anchor word. Because these are all single words, you'll be voting on the anchor word. And when we vote, you're just gonna use one strip. You're gonna have a one, two, and a three, not the full sheet that I mistakenly given you. Lastly, um, they should be consistent in style and arrangement. You know, like, the example I gave, you're not gonna have one that's five words and another one that's twenty-five words. I mean, that just creates cognitive dissonance. So, we're gonna start off, and I'm gonna start off with Harry's, transparent. Awesome. The single-word adjectives that you want to be known for as your core values and that we will adhere to in our code of conduct and our daily activity.
Safety.
Safety.
Thank you, sir.
Trustworthy.
Pardon me?
Trustworthy.
Trustworthy.
Stability.
Oh, excuse me, let me get this out in the middle. I'm, um, favoring this side and I wanna get one person over here. I'm not dissing you, Tracy.
I got it, I got you.
Trustworthy was the last one I heard.
Inclusive.
Inclusive. You guys have done this before.
Stability.
Stability.
Stewardship. Community. Responsibility.
Can I add to responsibility in some way or, mine doesn't just move word. I wanna see something like evidence-based.
Well, I tell you what, if I put a hyphen in, that's one word.
There you go.
I mean, ask Merriam-Webster.
There you go.
You're my boss, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work it out.
Engagement.
Could we say engaging to make it a, uh, I'll, I'll use your word.
Well, engaging would be Hallmark-ish. Yeah, yeah, I meant engage, but like commu- like communication.
Yeah.
No rings involved.
No what involved?
No rings.
No rings. Yeah, I, I did. That's pretty funny though. What else? We're not doing headlines, Jeremy.
I know, right?
Single-word attribute.
Livability.
You stepped up to the plate.
Diversity.
It's, it's kinda like stability, but sustainability.
I think that stands on some.
Prosperity.
Prosperity, awesome.
Healthy.
Family-centered.
Family-centered, awesome.
How about respectable?
Innovative?
I think you guys are slowing down.
Open.
We get a, pardon me?
Open.
Open.
Honest, open, I mean, those were open.
It's getting honest, Jeremy. You could be open and be a flat-out liar, couldn't you?
Honest was very hard.
Are you an attorney?
Yeah.
That was, uh, that was a short pun.
I set you up nicely.
You did. I love it. You know, I'm starting to, I am, I'm writing better. I'm even writing bigger. What the heck has gone into me? Any others before we jump into our voting?
Probably gonna be able to pick three?
You're gonna pick three. But everybody else is gonna pick three. Everybody complains about not having enough dogs. That's normal. But when you have seven of you each picking your top three, you're gonna end up with a lot more than three there. So, uh, what it does, uh, the most important thing you do in anything, in business or as a council, is you have to make trade-offs. Because we can't do everything that we want to do. So we do the most important things. And now you have a guidance system, mission, vision, and about to have values that will help you make informed decisions. All the time you're putting in here, um, is not just to put this stuff, you know, in a folder, it gets filed. Uh, this stuff's gonna be in the lobby, it's gonna be on the website. You're gonna use it when you're grappling with making a You're gonna use it when you're grappling with making a strategic decision. It's gonna be very, uh, it's a great utility. Uh, any others before, uh, we vote? Once we vote, we can't add.
What's the last word in the first column?
Last word in the first column, prosperity. Yeah. It'll be easier to read once you're up here. But yeah, I mean.
Proctinity.
Yeah.
Proctinity.
Yeah. Oh, this here?
Salty.
Is there supposed to be an E between the T and the E?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was.
It's alright, you told us.
There you go.
Don't forget about the letterbox, oh, it's gone, sorry. Anything else? Okay.
Well, will you let me say one, I was hoping they would, I'm so sorry.
Don't be sorry.
I feel like integrity is what they're being added to, I just wanna throw that out for the list.
There's a reason you're here. I mean, not here tonight, I mean, there's a reason that you are here as city manager.
Throw integrity, add to the list.
Actually, before we vote, we have to consolidate. I almost skipped one of my deals. And as we consolidate, you can continue to add. You just can't add after you vote. Okay, transparent, safety, trustworthy. See, already trustworthy, honest, there are some synonyms here, that's very normal. Inclusive, stability, stewardship, community, responsibility, evidence-based, engagement, livability, diversity, um, sustainability, um, prosperity, and some of these can go together. Just like the other one had, you know, diversity, um, diversity, equity, and inclusion, they put all those together. Healthy, family-centered, respectful, innovative, open, honest, integrity. Where are the synonyms? Yes, Harry?
Open, honest, integrity, and trustworthy are all synonyms.
Honest, integrity, open.
And trustworthy.
Trustworthy.
Transparent, maybe?
And transparency as well.
I don't know, what do you all think?
Transparency would mean more of a communications value than a, uh, a job.
Okay, so we've got trustworthy, open, honest, and integrity. Um, I'd like to know which is the more powerful anchor to establish a core value statement?
Integrity.
Integrity, I agree.
A hundred percent.
Integrity, 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 okay. Shame on you for being so good. Integrity is a great, um, word that means so many positive things. Okay, well done, family.
Did you wanna, uh, group any others together?
Yeah, we're gonna group until you're done grouping.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do the same process as with, uh, the vision headlines. What else up there is, um?
Community and engagement, I think, go together. Unless the community, whoever offered community, if that had to do with like, um, events and gathering.
No, I did it as engagement is something different, community is.
More like events and gathering.
Our town and the value of, of everybody having a part.
We value our community. Yeah, I get it. Okay, hey, good, good discussion. Are there any other?
Diversity and inclusive, I don't know.
Um, yeah?
They're very similar, but not identical, but.
Well, whichever anchor you end with, you can throw them together. But we do need to choose one for the purposes of voting.
I prefer inclusive.
Yeah, I think they definitely should have.
It's, it's bigger, isn't it?
Bigger, yeah.
Is everybody okay with that? Inclusive, okay, nice work.
Responsibility and sustainability, are those?
And stewardship.
And stewardship.
I, yeah, I thought responsibility and stewardship went together. At least those two.
Yeah.
Is that sustainability also an, an environment sustainability, or is it a, is it something else?
I think it's two things.
It gives you several things.
Yeah.
So it's a bigger word.
Who offered it up to you?
I think he did.
It was German.
Okay, so stewardship and what else?
Sustainability and responsibility.
I know, it's right in front of me.
Except for the bottom on the first column.
Thank you. See, you know how to work with dyslexics.
I am dyslexic.
Are you?
Yes.
Cool.
Well, not cool, I mean, I've got a brother in the room. Um, I don't know about you, but what was a curse when I was in school has turned out to be a blessing. Okay, I've got stewardship and sustainability, I thought I heard a third.
And responsibility.
And responsibility. Right here, yeah, thank you. So those three, which one of those words, I kind of have an idea where you're gonna go, I'm not gonna say. Um, which one of those three, stewardship, responsibility, or sustainability is the, the, the better anchor for?
Sustainability.
Sustainability?
Yeah.
You guys all there? Sustainability? Okay. Good work.
I'd like to add one.
Okay, go for it.
I think we're missing service.
Very good.
Yeah, I don't see that as duping, do you?
What about leadership?
Oh. That's a strong one. I'm gonna give you a little bit of a disclaimer, um, and I'll take responsibility. We're running about twenty minutes behind. Uh, any other?
I think you could probably, you could probably imply your, uh, your derivative, uh, stability and sustainability.
Stability and sustainability, uh, are you all, does that make sense?
But we picked sustainability for stewardship and responsibility, so you have to correct stability would have to be the choice.
Well.
Or do we keep them both? So what does stability mean to you? I get it, though, I, I see it, I see what you're talking about. So if they are stability and sustainability.
Sustainability leads to stability.
Yeah, so like, this is the bigger word? Do you all agree with that?
I do.
We keep sustability, we keep sustainability. Okay, that makes, makes good sense. Okay. Good work. I'm not seeing anything else up there, are you? Okay, if you're good with that, then we're gonna go ahead and do the vote. Same, uh, process, you're gonna vote directly underneath the one you're picking, and we're gonna vote from left to right. Your one is your first choice, two is second, three is third, and they're weighted, right? So I'm gonna ask you to vote, um, just get up here and do it. Um, and then we'll move on to, uh, the next step.
We only get the three dots, correct?
That's correct.
Alright.
I mean, that's, I mean, just getting to the first year of law school was a major deal. My, um, sister used to be a law professor at Gonzaga. And she had just absolutely grown up in the first year, she had her master's, oh, sorry. Bachelors and masters, and worked for a JD. And, um, just, oh, I remember how tough that was. I was diagnosed in the third grade. I already gave you the story on the early retarded thing. But I mean, I couldn't read, spell, or do math even close.
My rationalization was about your computer going to law school, so I can spell.
When I went to college, we only had typewriters. Oh, my gosh, I used more whiteout than you would believe. All of my seven electives voted? This one on the side, is that for safety or for transparent?
Safety.
Okay, that's why I say do it underneath, because I can't tell, thank you. Okay. Integrity made the cut, just, just sharing that. Catherine, I'm sorry.
Oh, what'd you say?
I said integrity made the cut. Don't remind her that I called it. That's the, that's the part, that's part of dyslexia. Okay, here's your votes. I just did the top five, you have, uh, because after that, it's a bunch of twos. So, first choice at fourteen votes, safety, number one. Second choice at eight votes is sustainability. Tied for third is transparent and, uh, innovative. No, and integrity, and in fifth place is innovative. So if you are known for being, being focused on safety, um, that, uh, your focus was sustainability, you're about, uh, being transparent, you're about integrity, and you're innovative, if you are known for that as a city, would that be such a bad thing? That's, that's just really good stuff. Are we good to go to start writing our statements? Oh, by the way, there is another, um, way of doing it. I mean, a lot of them do the full sentence like that. Um, I did a thing with, uh, a chamber that did, um, had an opening and sentence, you know? Uh, you know, we, and, and every, uh, relationship, um, and activity, we will, and that was a, a colon, and then it's listed the end of words. So I mean, that's one way to do it. I'm not preaching, I'm not trying to sell you on it, I just want you to know what your options are. Okay, we're gonna do them in order, you know, you can rearrange the order later if you want. Okay, first is, uh, safety. So you might remember that I said these wanna be, you know, kind of of the same genre. They wanna have the same arrangement, you know, basically, you know, similar number of words, you know, I usually recommend between six and ten. Um, not limited to that, but we want them to have the same cadence, you know? It could be as simple as, we will, and then, you know, it could be something else. We will prioritize safety above all else, or, you know what I mean? So, uh, in terms of safety, what is it, what's the short little sentence that we wanna do with that? Or do you prefer having an opening statement and just having, uh, those words listed? What, what makes the most sense to you?
I can't think of an opening statement with these words. I would have to agree. I think that's clearer.
It, it's really clear and. Yeah. Well, it also means that we're gonna get out of here early. That, now, um.
That was not.
Well, this one was. Um, well, we can certainly do that, so what we need to do is come up with an opening statement.
Does it have to say Des Moines, or can it say we will?
Oh, we will. Um, the only thing that has to have the brand is the mission statement. The order is mission, vision, values. So no, you do not, yeah, you could say, we will, we prioritize, um, uh, we will conduct our, um, activities and operations based on the following values, I mean, you can say anything.
Is it the city of Des Moines that will conduct, or the council that will conduct themselves?
It's the entire, it's, it's, yeah, it's enterprise-wide. It's everybody in this room. Yeah, everybody that is either employed with the city or elected to the city. Yeah, it's not just, um, I mean, this is, uh, Catherine will be using this, and, you know, I can see where you put all three of these together in a nice-framed thing, and I actually worked with an electrical contractor. It wa, it was a large company, they had, uh, oh, it doesn't matter. But, um, the CEO, after we did this, actually, uh, put together a really nice, except he did it in a smaller frame for desks. And for the holidays, he gave every single, and they had, you know, hundreds of employees, he did one for every employee, regardless of their, they had little stands, so it could be, you know, like a little easel, and he had everybody put it on their desk.
How about the city of Des Moines will conduct ourselves with the following values, by the book?
You know, it's kind of ironic, um, the example I use is that chamber, with the one word and just, uh, the words. I pulled it out because with the cities, I usually show a city example. But when I'm doing corporate, I'm doing exactly what we're doing now. Okay, so we have a great contribution, um, I'd like to hear from other folks. Let's hear from Harry's colleagues.
How about we will measure our conduct and leadership according to the following values?
Say that again.
It's, it's almost the same, just, uh, we will measure our conduct and leadership according.
Does anybody else have one they wanna add up here, and then we can kinda? In fact, if we can get a couple in there, and you can use one of your rows for sticky dots. What do you think about that, Yoshiko? Would that be cool? You're, you're dying to bring in some more bullets, or more dots, right?
More dots, um.
Both of these are killers, but I wanna, you know, we're doing so well on time, that's, we could still get out of here fifteen minutes early and add a few more.
I just want a clarification, um, when you said we will, could that be replaced with the city of Des Moines, or we as council, or we as?
Well, don't do we as council, because it's bigger than.
Right, that's, that's my question is, is this, could that be, cause we is, I mean, very.
It's the entire city, all staff, um, you know, it's the police department, it's all of our.
Scriptive enough, I don't think, in my mind, but, okay.
Yeah, so go with it then, you know, the city of Des Moines will measure our.
Just a question, just throwing out there to my colleagues. I mean, to me, it just seemed very ambiguous.
Yeah, so we've got two different versions of that one.
Can I get some clarification on what the value of safety means in this context? I think it was originally brought up maybe public safety, but can I get a little bit of deep, because this one is important to me out here. Higher than measure your conduct and leadership as opposed to just the word safety. Does that mean employee safety, citizen safety, public safety?
Through my tenure on council, I think it, it, I think it encompasses everything, in, including council members and staff members and largely our community, but there have been some instances that it, it, it includes staff members and council members and, and, um, so I, I think I'm bringing it forward as a whole, um, but, um, as clarification, if we need to dive deeper into that, I'm okay with that.
Could, could we put personal and public safety for the word safety? And when, when you're gonna start the, so we're still dealing with this top sentence?
Yeah, let's do, let's do.
Safety, okay.
Yeah, so if you're gonna do that, the answer is yes, but remember, they need to be in the same genre, then you would need to have modifiers for the others.
No, it's just people, it's personal and public safety, innovation.
Right, what I'm saying is that if you've got one that's multiple words, under the, the rule of having the same arrangement, you would have modifiers for the others too, which is fine, absolutely. Um, yeah, that, does, doesn't public safety cover personal safety? Aren't people part of the public?
I would have to agree.
So, public safety, then you could add one, um, clarifier in front of the others, and you would have the same cadence.
I don't think we can get to a modifier in front of each one of these values, and once we start modifying, that's not what we're looking for.
That's true.
And so.
I, yeah, it's true.
If we, if we wanna, we're committed later, but for the purposes of the exercise, at least, let's.
Good point, Harry, but let's finish it the way that, yeah, let's finish it the way that we wanted to. But let's get that sentence. So we've got a couple things. The city of Des Moines will conduct itself, is that right, Jean, itself?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Itself with the following values.
You know, if anybody really loved that, great, but I'd, I'd be willing to pick that off the list even more, it might suggest, and you go with the second statement, I think.
Why don't we just make it simple and say, you know, city of Des Moines will prioritize the following values? Either way, it's probably be, I like the first one or that.
Or you could say our core values are. And then just, just like that. I, I have an issue with, with the conduct part, because I, I think it's more than just how you act, and I'm hoping that folks embrace values, um.
So what did you say again, um, Yoshiko?
Oh, I just said our core values are.
Are. And do we wanna put the core values of the city of Des Moines, or do you wanna put are? Because we had this discussion about we and our, so do we wanna put the city of Des Moines in that statement? Cause I'm fine with that too.
I, I think it should be the city of Des Moines, is how it starts.
And then, so do you put the city of Des Moines are core values with a apostrophe, or do you put the core values of the city of Des Moines are? Des Moines first or after?
Um, indifferent.
Core values, I think, yes.
Core values.
First, core values first.
Core values.
Core values of the city of Des Moines are.
The core values?
No, I'm sorry.
Just core.
Core values.
Core values of the city. That's what I said. Core values of the city of Des Moines are.
And then it'd be a colon, right? And you'd have your five, your five words. Okay, there's a lot of great stuff up there.
Inclusive will have, going on that.
No, we've got, um, we've got safety, sustainability, integrity, uh, transparent.
C.
It should be, um, intent, parent, C.
And innovation, cause they show.
And then innovation, yeah, we'll, we'll modify all those. These were just anchors, so absolutely we will do that. So, my question to you is, are we good with core, core values of the city of Des Moines are?
Yes.
You're good with that.
I see just about everybody nodding their head. And I know J.C. absolutely loves it. I can tell by the look on his face. He's jamming. So should we see what it looks like with the rest of those? Uh, so it'd be, um, safety. Next is sustainability. Do you know what I love about what you've got up there, like the sustainability? It doesn't matter what it means to the reader, right? Beauty isn't eye of the holders. However they read it, it's positive. Sustainability.
Transparency.
Yeah, tra, transparency.
I'm, I'm doing it, yeah, it's tied with integrity. I have them numbered up there, you might not be able to see it. And the last one is innovative. No, innovation?
Innovation.
This is what we care about. Safety, sustainability, integrity, transparency, and innovation. Drop the mic. Nice work. Holy moly. So obviously, we're ahead of time. Uh, the facilitator never has the last. We're done, gonna ask Tracy to close us out, but before that, I wanna know if any of my other council members have any closing comments. This is your session, I want you to be able to share whatever you wanna share.
I just have a question. Is this helpful, Catherine?
It is. Hearing the discussion was super helpful, but I think we're not done. Like, this is sort of the foundation. There's obviously a lot more like specific goals and things to follow, etc. This is very helpful in here.
Yeah, this is the top, this is the strata, this is the trailhead of strategic planning. We need to get kind of into the nitty gritty, and as we discuss that, we'll have our mission, vision, and values in front of us, because that'll be the guidance system that will help you prioritize. You already know in your head what you want to happen. Um, these.
I just wanna make, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we are dumping a lot.
It's useful.
As a manager, and I wanna make sure that she, you know.
Well, I'm glad you asked her, but rather than thinking you're dumping a lot on her, you're giving her the ability to level set and to make sure she doesn't overvote her staff, because she has your priorities. Is that accurate?
Especially as we're facing a tough fiscal year. This is helpful, right?
Yeah, and then, but we're not done. The next step is, we need to do strategic planning after that, to establish, uh, the goals, and a lot of cities do SMART goals. They make sure that they're specific, measurable, um, assigned, realistic, and time-bound. I mean, that's where accountability comes from. Without those, there is no accountability. Okay.
My, my only comment is, thank you very much for facilitating this.
Oh, bless your heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, and I know.
Proud to deal with, so, thank you.
I made several mistakes, and people put up with me, thank you. I, um, no, I'm serious.
I don't make mistakes, that's what I'm saying, just.
Yeah, but, um, we got through it. Um, it was an honor working with all of you. You are smart, caring people. You care about your community, and it's just, this was such a treat. So, as I, bless you all, so as I said, facilitator doesn't have the last word. Tracy, would you please close this out?
Sure. I first, I first. Oh, thank you. Well, my thanks to you also, Andrew. You know that I appreciate you. I think you did a, a great job working hard to pull us all in. I'm looking forward to, uh, how we bounce off of this springboard and bring more, even more value to our process as a city. Um, so thank you, I'm looking forward to future conversations. I would like to hand it over to Catherine for just a moment for announcement.
Just a su, uh, email was down all day, or you all would have heard this already, but, uh, we have set the date for the town hall that the council's asked for regarding the SAMPP process. It is December third, six to seven P.M. It'll be here at City Hall, but there's also an online version, it'll be recorded. We'll be putting word out tomorrow. Um, the focus of the meeting is really to equip residents to know how to make comments during this comment period that are meaningful and relevant, and really to help them go through that process. So we will not be explaining the ins and outs of the SAMPP necessarily, it's really geared towards the comment period. But December third, six to seven, we'll be putting that out publicly tomorrow. Thanks.
Is that, so is that a hybrid meeting, or when people get online, are they just watching? Or is it interactive, uh, the online?
We are still figuring out the total format of the meeting, um, but I think we would like to have some interaction where people can ask some questions. We're still working all that out with details to come, but for today, I really wanna get that date out.
Okay, and will there be digital flyers that people can share on social media platforms?
Oh, you know Nicole left, but there sure will be.
Okay.
Oh, look, she's walking in. There sure will be. I'll tell Nicole. Yes, we'll do that.
You didn't wanna go home right now, did you? We'll have this done in forty-five minutes.
Okay, so good, I'm looking forward to that. Very, I just wanna give a little backdrop. We, this, uh, event was super important to the council, it was a seven-o vote, and the staff, my great appreciation, I really have no idea how hard it was to pull this together in a short period of time, and I think people worked super hard to get this done, honoring the council desire, and, um, and so I'm really hoping that the community benefits from it in a way that maybe they couldn't benefit from other types of presentations. The city is very interested in doing what the citizens need, um, and what they, so thank you all who worked on this. Uh, okay, the next meeting date will be November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. It's a city council regular business meeting. Please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out, all these wrappers and everything, look underneath your tables and chairs, and, uh, Councilmember Nutting, would you like to make the motion?
Move to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Seven zero, where adjourn? Thank you.